Everybody rise for the singing of national anthem.
Bayang magiliw, peras ang silang anan, alang ng kuso sa dibid moy buhay. Lubang hiniram, buyan ka ng magiliw, sa manlulupi kita pasisibil. Sa lalat at bundok, sa simoy at sa langit, rokabaw, kay hilang ang kula at awit sa paglayang nilawahan. Ang isap ng wakaw at moy tagumpay naratingin. Ang bituming at araw niya kailan, ang pali mangtindil. Luban ang araw na angwar, hangit magsikna, urey labi sa tibok. Ang likaya dapat may mahapin at mamatay ng daril sa'yo.
Please remain standing for a minute of silent prayer. Majority leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we defer the calling of the roll.
There's a motion to defer the calling of the roll. Is there an objection? Motion is approved. Majority leader.
Objection. Mr. Speaker, we were all informed that the roll call will be called right after the national anthem. So there is no reason why we should defer the calling of the roll. We have rules to follow and it's about time that we all do.
Majority leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move to call the roll of members.
The secretary-general is directed to call the roll.
Roll call of members, honorable representatives: Abaya, Abayon, Abelia Nosa, Abu, Abueg, Acheron, Akop, Acosta, Acosta Alba, Ajong, Advinkula, Agaraw, Agabaw, Albano, Alcala, Alehano, Almario, Almonte, Alonte, Alvarez Franz, Alvarez Mercedes, Alvarez Panteleon, Amante, Amatong, Andaya, Angara Castillo, Antonino, Antonio, Aquino Magsaysay, Aragonés, Arbizon, Arcillas, Arenas, Atsensha, Aumentado, Bagau, Bagaching, Bagilat, Banal, Barbers, Barsaga, Batawil, Batucabe, Bautista Mendigan, Bilaro, Belmonte Feliciano, Belmonte Jose Christopher, Belmonte Ricardo, Benitez, Bernos, Bertis, Biazon, Bilyones, Birón, Bulilia, Bondok, Bordado, Bravo Anthony, Bravo María Vida, Brosas, Bulut Big Tang, Cagas, Calderón, Calixtrobiano, Caminero, Campos, Canama, Kari, Casilau, Castelo, Casofranc, Casofredinil, Katamco, Cayetano, Celeste, Seráfica, Siriles, Chávez, Chipeco, Co, Coango, Coliantes, Cortés, Cortuna, Cosalan, Crisologo, Cuah, Cuaresma, Cueva, Dalipe, Datol, Dasa, De Jesus, De Venesia, De Fenor, Del Mar, Del Rosario, Del Osamontalia, Dimapor Abdullah, Dimaporo Khalid, Duavit, Durano, Di, Elago, Enverga, Erise, Regel, Hermita Bohain, Escudero, Espina, Espino, Estrella, Josebio, Evardone, Fariñas, Fernando, Ferrer Juliet, Ferrer Luis, Feriol, Florendo, Flores, Fortún, Fortuno, Fuentebelia, Garbin, Gáres, García Guendolin, García Jose, García Albano, Garin Richard, Garin Sharon, Gasataya, Gatchalian, Heron, Guana Cristina. Guana Cristina, Gomarc, Gómez, Gonzaga, González Alexandria, González Dong, González Fernando, Goriseta, Gulyas, Hernández, Hernández Ferdinand, Hernández Paul, Herrera Di, Hofer, Halushos, Javier, Co, Conghun, Labad Labad, Lacson, Lagman, Lanete, Laugán, Lasatin, Lia Chon, Li, Limcaychong, Lobrigat, López Benur, López Carlo, López Manuel, Loyola, Makapagalaroyo, Maceda, Madrona, Malapitan, Manalo, Mangawang, Mangutadatus Huarto, Mangutadatus Ajid, Marcoleta, Marcos, Mariño, Marquez, Martínez, Matugas, Millana, Mending, Mendoza, Mercado, Mirasol, Montoro, Nava, Nieto, Noel, Nograles, Nolasco, Núñez Malanyon, Gominal, Ocampo, Olivares, Ong Edwin, Ong Henry, Ortega Pablo, Ortega Viní, Pacquiao, Paduano, Palma, Pancho, Panganiban, Panotes, Papandayan, Pichai, Pico, Pimentel, Pineda, Plaza, Primisias Agabás, Kimbo, Radasa, Ramirisato, Ramos, Relampagos, Rivilla, Ropuno, Robes, Rocomora, Rodríguez Isidro, Rodríguez Maximo, Roman, Romero, Romualdes, Romualdo, Roque, Sackdalan, Sagarbaria, Sahali, Salceda, Salimbangan, Salón, Salo, Sambar, Sandoval, Sangkopan, Santos Repto, Sarmiento Cesar, Sarmiento Edgar, Savillano, Semah, Xiao, Silverio, Singson, Swansing Estrelita, Swansing Horacio, Suárez, Si Alvarado, Tambunting, Tan Angelina, Tan Milagrosa, Tan Sherni, Tejada, Teves, Chanco, Ting, Tiño, Tolentino, Trenyas, Tugna, Tupas, Di, Umalí, Unabia, Ungab, Uniko, Uy Juliet, Uy Rolando, Uy Barreta, Vargas, Vargas Alfonso, Villarde, Villasco, Villasco Cartera, Veloso, Vergara, Villa Fuerte, Villanueva, Villara Suárez, Villarica, Villarin, Villago, Yap Arthur, Yap Melencio, Yap Victor, Yu, Zamora Marcamen, Zamora Ronaldo, Zarate, Zubiri. The speaker is present.
Mr. Speaker, the roll call shows that 209 members responded to the call.
With 209 responding to the call, the chair declares a present of a quorum. Majority leader.
Mr. Speaker, considering that copies of the journals of the previous sessions have been distributed to the members, I move that we dispense with the reading of the journal.
Is there any objection? Hearing none. The reading of the journals is dispensed.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we approve journals number 31 dated November 2018 and journal number 32 dated November 21, 2018. I so move, Mr. Speaker.
Is there any objection? Hearing none, the motion is approved.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we now proceed with the reference of business and request that the secretary-general be directed to read the titles of the bills and resolutions on first reading as well as communications and committee reports.
The secretary-general is directed to read the title of the bill, journal, messages, and others.
Reference of Business: Bills on First Reading. House Bill 8613, Providing for an Opt-Out System of Organ Donation and Transplantation. Representative Alonte.
To the Committee of Health.
House Bill 8614, Declaring November 9 of every year a special non-working holiday in the province of Eastern Samar to be known as the Eastern Samar Founding University. Representative Evardone.
To the Committee on Reduction of Loss.
House Bill 8615, Strengthening the Fight to End Tuberculosis. Representative Tan Angelina.
To the Committee on Health.
House Bill 8616, Amending Presidential Decree Number 442 as amended. Representative Villarin.
To the Committee on Labor and Employment.
House Bill 8617, Renewing the franchise granted to FBS Radio Network Incorporated. Representative Chavez.
To the Committee on Justative Franchise.
House Bill 8619, Amending Section 24 of Republic Act Number 8491. Representatives Salo and Hernández Paul.
To the Committee on Basic Education and Culture.
House Bill 8620, Granting Civil Service Eligibility to Those Who Have Rendered at Least Three Consecutive Years of Government Service or at least Five Non-Consecutive Years Whose Appointment Status is either Contractual, Cashual, or Job Order. Representatives Salo and Hernández Paul.
To the Committee on Civil Services and Propational Regulation.
House Bill 8621, Establishing an Electronic and Express Mood for Government Procurement. Representative Nieto.
To the Committee on Appropriation.
House Bill 8622, Mandating the One-Way Flow of Vehicular Traffic Along Both Edsa Sides of Edsa in Metro Manila. Representative Nieto.
To the Committee on Transportation.
House Bill 8623, Instituting PWD's Friendly Transportation Program in Cities and Urban Centers of the Country. Representative Nieto.
To the Committee on Social Services.
House Bill 8624, Establishing Green Building Rooftops on All Government and Privately-Owned Buildings Within the Country. Representative Nieto.
To the Committee on Ecology.
House Bill 8625, Amending and Repealing RA Number 9297. Representative Nograles.
The Committee on Trade in Industry.
House Bill Number 8635, Institute Nationalizing Nenedas an Independent Economic and Planning Agency of the Philippine Government. Representatives Makapagalaroyo, Salceda, Yap Arthur, and Gatchalian.
To the Committee on Economic Affairs.
Resolutions. House Resolution 2308, Directing the Economic Managers to revisit suggested retail prices of basic commodities for possible rollback in view of the declining global crude oil prices. Representative Cuah.
To the Committee on Trade in Industry.
House Resolution 2309, Urging the Committee on Banks and Financial Intermediaries and on good government and public accountability to inquire into alleged prioritization of private lending institutions over the GSIS. Representative Teves.
To the Committee on Rules.
House Resolution 2310, Urging the Committee on Health to investigate the alleged unsettled accounts of the failed health to public and private hospitals across the country. Representative Teves.
To the Committee on Rules.
Messages from the Senate. Message dated November 15, 2018, informing the House that the Senate on November 14, 2018, passed Senate Bill Number 1998.
To the Committee on Rules.
Message dated November 15, informing the House that on November 14, the Senate approved Conference Committee Report on the Disagreeing Provisions, Senate Bill Number 1305 and House Bill 4113.
To the Committee on Rules.
Message dated November 15, informing the House that November 14, the Senate designated Senators Poe, Ejército Rector Villanueva and Ontiveros as conferees to the Bi-Cameral Conference Committee on the Disagreeing Provisions of Senate Bill Number 1971 and House Bill 6938.
To the Committee on Rules.
Message dated November 15, informing the House that November 14, the Senate designated Senators Grace Poe, Rector, Ejército, Escudero, Aquino IV as conferees to the Bi-Cameral Conference Committee on the Disagreeing Provision of Senate Bill Number 1749 and House Bill Number 725.
Committee on Rules.
Communication. Letter dated October 19 of the Honorable Executive Secretary, Office of the President, returning here with enrolled copies of consolidated Senate Bill Number 1233 and House Bill 5745.
Committee on Rules.
Committee Reports. Report Numbers 942 to 945 by the Committee on Legislative Franchises on House Bill Number 8631 to 8634.
To the Committee on Rules.
Report Number 946 by the Committee on Appropriations and Ways and Means on House Bill Number 8636.
To the Committee on Rules.
Report Number 947 by the Committees on Government Enterprises and Privatization, Appropriations, Ways and Means on House Bill 8637.
Committee on Rules.
Report Numbers 948 to 950 by the Committees on Tourism and Appropriations on House Bill Numbers 8642 to 8644.
Committee on Rules.
Report Number 951 by the Committee on Ways and Means on House Bill Number 8645.
To the Committee on Rules. Majority leader.
Mr. Speaker, respectfully move that we recognize the guests of the Honorable Congressman Jeffrey D. Conghun of the First District of Zambales. These are barangay captains from the municipal San Marcelino Zambales and Farm 24-K Association from Badar Bareto, Olongapo City. So move, Mr. Speaker.
The guests of Honorable Conghun, please rise to be recognized. Welcome to the House of Representatives. Majority leader.
Mr. Speaker, respectfully move that we acknowledge the guests of the Honorable Congresswoman Florida P. Robes of the Lone District, City of San Jose del Monte Bulacan. These are the city mayor, Honorable Arturo B. Robes, city administrator, Dr. Dennis B. M. Booth, city legal officer, attorney Elmer Galicia, city assistant administrator, attorney Paul Vega, representatives from Prime Water San Jose del Monte, representatives from San Jose del Monte Water District, officials of Sangguliang barangay in Kabataan from the 59 barangays, pastoral sector, persons with disability organization, deputed public school teachers, parent teacher associations, officers of homeowners association. So move, Mr. Speaker.
The guests of Honorable Robes, please rise to be recognized. Welcome to the House of Representatives. Majority leader.
Finally, Mr. Speaker, I move that we recognize the guests of the Honorable Willie Caminero of the Second District of Cigü. These are Bems Mondrid, Marifela Ondiano, Joanna Hireja, Captain June Hireja, Sheila Gambowa, Lordess B. Amor, and Ronald M. Amor. Thank you.
The guests of Honorable Caminero of Cigu, please rise to recognize. Welcome to the House of Representatives. Majority leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move for the consideration and third reading of House Joint Resolution Number 32. Printed copies of which were distributed to the members pursuant to the rules of the House. For this purpose, my Mr. Speaker may request that the Secretary-General be directed to read the title of the bill or the joint resolution and thereafter to call the roll for nominal voting. So move, Mr. Speaker.
The Secretary-General is directed to read the title of the bill.
House Joint Resolution 32. Joint Resolution Extending the Availability of the 2018 Appropriations for Maintenance and Other Operating Expenses and Capital Outlays to December 31, 2019. Amending for the purpose Section 61 of the General Provisions of Republic Act 10964, the General Appropriations Act of Fiscal Year 2018. Roll call of members in consideration of House Joint Resolution 32. Abaya, Abayon, Abelia Nosa, Abu, Abueg, Acheron, Akop, Acosta, Acosta Alba, Ajong, Advinkula, Agaraw, Agabaw, Albano, Alcala, Alehano, Almario, Almonte, Alonte, Alvarez Franz, Alvarez Mercedes, Alvarez Panteleon, Amante, Amatong, Andaya, Angara Castillo, Antonino, Antonio, Aquino Magsaysay, Aragonés, Arbizon, Arcillas, Arenas, Atsensha, Aumentado, Bagau, Bagatsing, Bagilat, Banal, Barbers, Barsaga, Batawil, Batucabe, Bautista Bendigan, Bilaro, Belmonte Feliciano, Belmonte Se-Christopher, Belmonte Ricardo, Benitez, Bernos, Bertis, Biazon, Bilyones, Brion, Bulilia, Bondok, Bordado, Bravo Anthony, Bravo María Vida, Brosas, Bulut Big Tang, Cagas, Calderón, Calixtrobiano, Caminero, Campos, Canama, Kari, Casilau, Castelo, Castrofranc, Castrofredinil, Katamco, Cayetano, Celeste, Seráfica, Siriles, Chávez, Chipeco, Co, Coango, Coliantes, Cortés, Cortuna, Cosalan, Crisologo, Cuah, Cuaresma, Cueva, Dalipe, Datol, Dasa, De Jesus, De Venesia, De Fenor, Del Mar, Del Rosario, Del Osamontalia, Dimapor Abdullah, Dimaporo Mohamed Khalid, Duavit, Durano, Di, Elago, Enverga, Erise, Regel, Hermita Bohain, Escudero, Espina, Espino, Estrella, Josebio, Evardone, Fariñas, Fernando, Ferrer Juliet, Ferrer Luis, Feriol, Florendo, Flores, Fortún, Fortuno, Fuentebelia, Garbin, García Guendolin, García José Enrique, García Albano, Garin Óscar, Garin Sharon, Gasataya, Gatchalian, Heron, Go Anna Cristina, Gomarc, Gómez, Gonzaga, González Alexandria, González Aurelio, González Fernando, Goriseta, Gulyas, Hernández Ferdinand, Hernández Paul, Herrera Di, Hofer, Halushos, Javier, Co, Conghun, Labad Labad, Lacson, Lagman, Lanete, Laugán, Lasatin, Lia Chon, Li, Limcaychong, Lobrigat, López Benur, López Carlo, López Manuel, Loyola, Makapagalaroyo, Maceda, Madrona, Malapitan, Manalo, Mangawang, Mangutadatus Huarto, Mangutadatus Ajid, Marcoleta, Marcos, Mariño, Marquez, Martínez, Matugas, Millana, Mending, Mendoza, Mercado, Mirasol, Montoro, Nava, Nieto, Noel, Nograles, Nolasco, Núñez Malanyon, Gominal, Ocampo, Olivares, Ong Edwin, Ong Henry, Ortega Pablo, Ortega Vininola, Pacquiao, Paduano, Palma, Pancho, Panganiban, Panotes, Papandayan, Pichai, Pico, Pimentel, Pineda, Plaza, Primisias Agabás, Kimbo, Radasa, Ramirisato, Ramos, Relampago, Rivilla, Ropuno, Robes, Rocomora, Rodríguez Isidro, Rodríguez Maximo, Roman, Romero, Romualdes, Romualdo, Roque, Sackdalan, Sagarbaria, Sahali, Salceda, Salimbangan, Salo, Salón, Sambar, Sandoval, Sangkopan, Santos Repto, Sarmiento Cesar, Sarmiento Edgar Mary, Savillano, Semah, Xiao, Silverio, Singson, Swansing Estrelita, Swansing Horacio, Suárez, Si Alvarado, Tambunting, Tan Angelina, Tan Milagrosa, Tan Sherni, Tejada, Teves, Chanco, Ting, Tiño, Tolentino, Trenyas, Tugna, Tupas, Di, Umalí, Unabia, Ungab, Uniko, Uy Juliet, Uy Rolando, Uy Barreta, Vargas, Vargas Alfonso, Villarde, Villasco, Villasco Cartera, Veloso, Vergara, Villa Fuerte, Villanueva, Villara Suárez, Villarica, Villarin, Villago, Yap Arthur, Yap Melencio, Yap Victor, Yu, Zamora María Carmen, Zamora Ronaldo, Zarate, Zubiri.
With 194 voted in the affirmative, 6 negative, 0 abstention. House Bill Resolution 32 is heard by approved on third and final reading. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move for consideration on third reading of House Bill Number 7005. Printed copies of which were distributed to the members pursuant to our rules. For this purpose, Mr. Speaker, I request that the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the bill and thereafter to call again for nominal voting. So move, Mr. Speaker.
The Secretary General is directed to read the title of the bill and thereafter call the roll for nominal voting.
House Bill 7005, enact recognizing the Everest Academy as an educational institution of international character and granting the Academy certain prerogatives to promote its development. Roll call of members in consideration of House Bill 7005. Abaya, Abayon, Abelianosa, Abu, Abweg, Atcharon, Akop, Acosta, Acosta Alba, Adjong, Advinkula, Agaraw, Agabaw, Albano, Alkala, Alehano, Almario, Almonte, Alonte, Alvarez Franz, Alvarez Mercedes, Alvarez Pantalyon, Amante, Amatong, Andaya, Angara Castillo, Antonino, Antonio, Aquino Magcaysay, Aragonés, Arbison, Arcillas, Arenas, Atchenza, Aumentado, Bagaw, Bagatsing, Bagilat, Banal, Barberz, Bersaga, Batawil, Batokabe, Bautista Bendigan, Belaro, Belmonte Feliciano, Belmonte Jose Christopher, Belmonte Ricardo, Benitez, Bernos, Bertis, Biazon, Biliones, Birón, Bolilia, Bondok, Bordado, Bravo Anthony, Bravo María Vida, Brosas, Bulut Megtang, Kagas, Calderón, Calixterobiano, Caminero, Campos, Canama, Kari, Casila, Castelo, Castrofranz, Castrofredinil, Katamco, Cayetano, Celeste, Serafica, Ciriles, Chávez, Chipeco, Ko, Kowanko, Culiantes, Cortez, Cortuna, Cosalan, Crisologo, Kuah, Cuaresma, Cueva, Dalipe, Datol, Dasa, De Jesus, De Venesia, Defensor, Delmar, Del Rosario, Del Osomontalia, Dimapura Abdullah, Dimapuro Mohamed Khalid, Duabit, Durano, Di, Ilago, Enverga, Erise, Ergel, Ermita Buahin, Escudero, Espina, Espino, Estrella, Josebio, Evardone, Farínias, Fernando, Ferrer Juliet, Ferrer Luis, Feriol, Florendo, Flores, Fortun, Fortuno, Fuentebella, Garbin, García Guedolin, García José Enrique, García Albano, Garin Oscar, Garin Charon, Gasataya, Gatchalian, Heron, Go Anna Cristina, Go Mark, Gomez, Gonzaga, González Alexandria, González Aurelio, González Fernando, Rosetta, Gulyas, Hernández Ferdinand, Hernández Paul, Herrera D., Hofer, Halus Jos, Javier, Ko, Kunghon, Labad Labad, Laxson, Lagman, Lanete, Laugan, Lasatin, Liatson, Lee, Limcaichong, Lobregat, López Benher, López Carlo, López Manuel Luis, Loyola, Makapagalaroyo, Maceda, Madrona, Malapitan, Manalo, Mangawang, Magudadato Sa Harto, Magudadato Sa Jid, Marcoleta, Marcos, Marinho, Marques, Martínez, Matugas, Miliana, Mending, Mendoza, Mercado, Mirasol, Montoro, Nava, Nieto, Noel, Noograles, Nolasco, Núñez Malanyon, Uminal, Ocampo, Olivares, Ong Edwin, Ong Henry, Ong Ortega Pablo, Ortega Vininola, Paciau, Paduano, Palma, Pancho, Panganiban, Panotes, Papandayan, Pichai, Pico, Pimentel, Pineda, Plaza, Premisiéz Agabás, Kimbo, Radasa, Ramiresato, Ramos, Rolampago, Revilla, Ropapuno, Robes, Rocamora, Rodríguez Isidro, Rodríguez Maximo, Roman, Romero, Romualdes, Romualdo, Roque, Sakdalan, Sagarbarea, Sahali, Salceda, Salimbangon, Salo, Salon, Sambar, Sandoval, Sangkopan, Santos Repto, Sarmiento César, Sarmiento Edgar Mary, Sabillano, Semas, Xiao, Silverio, Singson, Swansing Estrelita, Swansing Horacio, Suárez, Si Alvarado, Tambunting, Tan Angelina, Tan Milagrosa, Tan Sherni, Tejada, Teves, Tiyango, Ting, Tiño, Tolentino, Trenyas, Tugna, Tupas, Ti, Umali, Unavia, Ungab, Uniko, Ui Juliet, Ui Rolando, Ui Bareta, Vargas, Vargas Alfonso, Villarde, Velasco, Velasco Cartera, Veloso, Vergara, Villa Fuerte, Villa Nueva, Villa Rasa Suárez, Villa Rica, Villa Rin, Violago, Yap Arthur, Yap Milencho, Yap Victor, Yu, Zamora María Carmen, Zamora Ronaldo, Zarate Zubiri.
With 206 voted in the affirmative, 0 negative, 0 abstention. House Bill 7005 is heard by approved on third and final reading. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move for consideration on third reading of House Bill Number 7878. Printed copies of which were previously distributed to the members of the House pursuant to our rules. For this purpose, may I request that the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the bill and thereafter to call the roll for nominal voting.
Is there any objection? The Secretary General is directed to read the title of the bill.
House Bill 7878, enact enhancing public safety at the local level by establishing and maintaining a Department of Public Safety in every province, city, and municipality. Roll call of members in consideration of House Bill 7878. Abaya, Abayon, Abelianosa, Abu, Abweg, Atcharon, Akop, Acosta, Acosta Alba, Adjong, Advinkula, Agaraw, Agabaw, Albano, Alkala, Alehano, Almario, Alonte, Almonte, Alvarez Franz, Alvarez Mercedes, Alvarez Pantalyon, Amante, Amatong, Andaya, Angara Castillo, Antonino, Antonio, Aquino Magcaysay, Aragonés, Arbison, Arcillas, Arenas, Atchenza, Mentado, Bagaw, Bagatsing, Bagilat, Banal, Barberz, Bersaga, Batawil, Batokabe, Bautista Bendigan, Belaro, Belmonte Feliciano, Belmonte Jose Christopher, Belmonte Ricardo, Benitez, Bernos, Bertis, Biazon, Biliones, Brion, Bolilia, Bondok, Bordado, Bravo Anthony, Bravo María Vida, Brosas, Bulut Megtang, Kagas, Calderón, Calixterobiano, Caminero, Campos, Canama, Kari, Casila, Castelo, Castrofranz, Castrofredinil, Katamco Cayetano, Celeste, Serafica, Ciriles, Chávez, Chipeco, Ko, Kowanko, Culiantes, Cortez, Cortuna, Cosalan, Crisologo, Kuah, Cuaresma, Cueva, Dalipe, Datol, Dasa, De Jesus, De Venesia, Defensor, Delmar, Del Rosario, Del Osomontalia, Dimapura Abdullah, Dimapuro Mohamed Khalid, Duabit, Durano, Di, Ilago, Enverga, Erise, Ergel, Ermita Buahin, Escudero, Espina, Espino, Estrella, Josebio, Evardone, Farínias, Fernando, Ferrer Juliet, Ferrer Luis, Feriol, Florendo, Flores, Fortun, Fortuno, Fuentebella, Garbin, García Guedolin, García José Enrique, García Albano, Garin Oscar, Garin Charon, Gasataya, Gatchalian, Heron, Go Anna Cristina, Go Mark, Gomez, Gonzaga, González Alexandria, González Aurelio, González Fernando, Rosetta, Gulyas, Hernández Ferdinand, Hernández Paul, Herrera D., Hofer, Halus Jos, Javier, Ko, Kunghon, Labad Labad, Laxson, Lagman, Yanete, Laugan, Leostin, Liatson, Lee, Limcaichong, Lobregat, López Benher, López Carlo, López Manuel, Loyola, Makapagalaroyo, Maceda, Madrona, Malapitan, Manalo, Mangawang, Magudadato Sa Harto, Magudadato Sa Jid, Marcoleta, Marcos, Marinho, Marques, Martínez, Matugas, Miliana, Mending, Mendoza, Mercado, Mirasol, Montoro, Nava, Nieto, Noel, Noograles, Nolasco, Núñez Malanyon, Uminal, Ocampo, Olivares, Ong Edwin, Ong Henry, Ortega Pablo, Ortega Vininola, Paciau, Paduano, Palma, Pancho, Panganiban, Panotes, Papandayan, Pichai, Pico, Pimentel, Pineda, Plaza, Premisiéz Agabás, Kimbo, Radasa, Ramiresato, Ramos, Rolampago, Revilla, Ropapuno, Robes, Rocamora, Rodríguez Isidro, Rodríguez Maximo, Roman, Romero, Romualdes, Romualdo, Roque, Sakdalan, Sagarbarea, Sahali, Salceda, Salimbangon, Salo, Salon, Sambar, Sandoval, Sangkopan, Santos Repto, Sarmiento César, Sarmiento Edgar Mary, Sabillano, Semas, Xiao, Silverio, Singson, Swansing Estrelita, Swansing Horacio, Suárez, Si Alvarado, Tambunting, Tan Angelina, Tan Milagrosa, Tan Sherni, Tejada, Teves, Tiyango, Ting, Tiño, Tolentino, Trenyas, Tugna, Tupas, Ti, Umali, Unavia, Ungab, Uniko, Ui Juliet, Ui Rolando, Ui Bareta, Vargas, Vargas Alfonso, Villarde, Velasco, Velasco Cartera, Veloso, Vergara, Villa Fuerte, Villa Nueva, Villa Rasa Suárez, Villa Rica, Villa Rin, Violago, Yap Arthur, Yap Milencho, Yap Victor, Yu, Zamora María Carmen, Zamora Ronaldo, Zarate Zubiri.
With 209 votes in the affirmative, negative, 0 negative, 0 abstention. House Bill 7878 is now approved on third and final reading. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move for consideration on third reading of House Bill Number 7973. Printed copies of which were previously distributed to the members of the House pursuant to our rules. For this purpose, may I request that the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the bill and thereafter to call the roll for nominal voting. So move, Mr. Speaker.
Is there any objection? The Secretary General is directed to read the title of the bill and thereafter call the roll for nominal voting.
House Bill 7973, enact providing for the remedy of filing a petition for certiorari to the Supreme Court to review the decisions of the National Labor Relations Commission. Amending for the purpose Articles 229 and 230, a presidential decree Number 442 as amended, otherwise known as the Labor Code of the Philippines. Roll call of members in consideration of House Bill 7973. Abaya, Abayon, Abelianosa, Abu, Abweg, Atcharon, Akop, Acosta, Acosta Alba, Adjong, Advinkula, Agaraw, Agabaw, Albano, Alkala, Alehano, Almario, Almonte, Alonte, Alvarez Franz, Alvarez Mercedes, Alvarez Pantalyon, Amante, Amatong, Andaya, Angara Castillo, Antonino, Antonio, Aquino Magcaysay, Aragonés, Arbison, Arcillas, Arenas, Atchenza, Aumentado, Bagaw, Bagatsing, Bagilat, Banal, Barberz, Bersaga, Batawil, Batokabe, Bautista Bendigan, Belaro, Belmonte Feliciano, Sarmiento Jose Christopher, Belmonte Ricardo, Benitez, Bernos, Bertis, Biazon, Biliones, Brion, Bolilia, Bondok, Bordado, Bravo Anthony, Bravo María Vida, Brosas, Bulut Megtang, Kagas, Calderón, Calixterobiano, Caminero, Campos, Canama, Kari, Casila, Castelo, Castrofranz, Castrofredinil, Katamco, Cayetano, Celeste, Serafica, Ciriles, Chávez, Chipeco, Ko, Kowanko, Culiantes, Cortez, Cortuna, Cosalan, Crisologo, Kuah, Cuaresma, Cueva, Dalipe, Datol, Dasa, De Jesus, De Venesia, Defensor, Delmar, Del Rosario, Del Osomontalia, Dimapura Abdullah, Dimapuro Mohamed Khalid, Duabit, Durano, Di, Ilago, Enverga, Erise, Ergel, Ermita Buahin, Escudero, Espina, Espino, Estrella, Josebio, Evardone, Farínias, Fernando, Ferrer Juliet, Ferrer Luis, Feriol, Florendo, Flores, Fortun, Fortuno, Fuentebella, Garbin, García Guedolin, García José Enrique, García Albano, Garin Oscar, Garin Charon, Gasataya, Gatchalian, Heron, Go Anna Cristina, Go Mark, Gomez, Gonzaga, González Alexandria, González Aurelio, González Fernando, Rosetta, Gulyas, Hernández Ferdinand, Hernández Paul, Herrera D., Hofer, Halus Jos, Javier, Ko, Kunghon, Labad Labad, Laxson, Lagman, Yanete, Laugan, Lasatin, Liatson, Lee, Limcaichong, Lobregat, López Benher, López Carlo, López Manuel Luis, Loyola, Makapagalaroyo, Maceda, Madrona, Malapitan, Manalo, Mangawang, Magudadato Sa Harto, Magudadato Sa Jid, Marcoleta, Marcos, Marinho, Marques, Martínez, Matugas, Miliana, Mending, Mendoza, Mercado, Mirasol, Montoro, Nava, Nieto, Noel, Noograles, Nolasco, Núñez Malanyon, Uminal, Ocampo, Olivares, Ong Edwin, Ong Henry, Ortega Pablo, Ortega Vininola, Paciau, Paduano, Palma, Pancho, Panganiban, Panotes, Papandayan, Pichai, Pico, Pimentel, Pineda, Plaza, Premisiéz Agabás, Kimbo, Radasa, Ramiresato, Ramos, Rolampago, Revilla, Ropapuno, Robes, Rocamora, Rodríguez Isidro, Rodríguez Maximo, Roman, Romero, Romualdes, Romualdo, Roque, Sakdalan, Sagarbarea, Sahali, Salceda, Salimbangon, Salo, Salon, Sambar, Sandoval, Sangkopan, Santos Repto, Sarmiento César, Sarmiento Edgar Mary, Sabillano, Semas, Xiao, Silverio, Singson, Swansing Estrelita, Swansing Horacio, Suárez, Si Alvarado, Tambunting, Tan Angelina, Tan Milagrosa, Tan Sherni, Tejada, Teves, Tiyango, Ting, Tiño, Tolentino, Trenyas, Tugna, Tupas, Ti, Umali, Unavia, Ungab, Uniko, Ui Juliet, Ui Rolando, Ui Bareta, Vargas, Vargas Alfonso, Villarde, Velasco, Velasco Cartera, Veloso, Vergara, Villa Fuerte, Villa Nueva, Villa Rasa Suárez, Villa Rica, Villa Rin, Violago, Yap Arthur, Yap Milencho, Yap Victor, Yu, Zamora María Carmen, Zamora Ronaldo, Zarate Zubiri.
With 215 voting in the affirmative, 0 negative, 0 abstention. House Bill 7973 is heard by approved on third and final reading. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move for consideration on third reading of House Bill Number 8145. Printed copies of which were previously distributed to the members of the House pursuant to our rules. For this purpose, Mr. Speaker, may I request that the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the bill and thereafter to call for nominal voting. So move, Mr. Speaker.
Is there any objection? Hearing none. The Secretary General is directed to read the title of the bill and thereafter call the roll for nominal voting of House Bill... 8248? 8145?
House Bill 8145, enact establishing marine protected areas in all coastal municipalities and cities. Roll call of members in consideration of House Bill 8145. Abaya, Abayon, Abelianosa, Abu, Abweg, Atcharon, Akop, Acosta, Acosta Alba, Adjong, Advinkula, Agaraw, Agabaw, Albano, Alkala, Alehano, Almario, Almonte, Alonte, Alvarez Franz, Alvarez Mercedes, Alvarez Pantalyon, Amante, Amatong, Andaya, Angara Castillo, Antonino, Antonio, Aquino Magcaysay, Aragonés, Arbison, Arcillas, Arenas, Atchenza, Aumentado, Bagaw, Bagatsing, Bagilat, Banal, Barberz, Bersaga, Batawil, Batokabe, Bautista Bendigan, Belaro, Belmonte Feliciano, Sarmiento Jose Christopher, Belmonte Ricardo, Benitez, Bernos, Biazon, Biliones, Brion, Bolilia, Bondok, Bordado, Bravo Anthony, Bravo María Vida, Brosas, Bulut Megtang, Kagas, Calderón, Calixterobiano, Caminero, Campos, Canama, Kari, Casila, Castelo, Castrofranz, Castrofredinil, Katamco Cayetano, Celeste, Serafica, Ciriles, Chávez, Chipeco, Ko, Kowanko, Culiantes, Cortez, Cortuna, Cosalan, Crisologo, Kuah, Cuaresma, Cueva, Dalipe, Datol, Dasa, De Jesus, De Venesia, Defensor, Delmar, Del Rosario, Del Osomontalia, Dimapura Abdullah, Dimapuro Mohamed Khalid, Duabit, Durano, Di, Ilago, Enverga, Erise, Ergel, Ermita Buahin, Escudero, Espina, Espino, Estrella, Josebio, Evardone, Farínias, Fernando, Ferrer Juliet, Ferrer Luis, Feriol, Florendo, Flores, Fortun, Fortuno, Fuentebella, Garbin, García Guedolin, García José Enrique, García Albano, Garin Oscar, Garin Charon, Gasataya, Gatchalian, Heron, Go Anna Cristina, Go Mark, Gomez, Gonzaga, González Alexandria, González Aurelio, González Fernando, Rosetta, Gulyas, Hernández Ferdinand, Hernández Paul, Herrera D., Hofer, Halus Jos, Javier, Kunghon, Labad Labad, Laxson, Lagman, Yaneta, Leo Ganies, Lasatin, Liatson, Lee, Limcaichong, Lobregat, López Benher, López Carlo, López Manuel, Loyola, Makapagalaroyo, Maceda, Madrona, Malapitan, Manalo, Mangawang, Magudadato Sa Harto, Magudadato Sa Jid, Marcoleta, Marcos, Marinho, Marques, Martínez, Matugas, Miliana, Mending, Mendoza, Mercado, Mirasol, Montoro, Nava, Nieto, Noel, Noograles, Nolasco, Núñez Malanyon, Uminal, Ocampo, Olivares, Ong Edwin, Ong Henry, Ong Ortega Pablo, Ortega Vininola, Paciau, Paduano, Palma, Pancho, Panganiban, Panotes, Papandayan, Pichai, Pico, Pimentel, Pineda, Plaza, Premisiéz Agabás, Kimbo, Radasa, Ramiresato, Ramos, Rolampago, Revilla, Ropapuno, Robes, Rocamora, Rodríguez Isidro, Rodríguez Maximo, Roman, Romero, Romualdes, Romualdo, Roque, Sakdalan, Sagarbarea, Sahali, Salceda, Salimbangon, Salo, Salon, Sambar, Sandoval, Sangkopan, Santos Repto, Sarmiento César, Sarmiento Edgar Mary, Sabillano, Semas, Xiao, Silverio, Singson, Swansing Estrelita, Swansing Horacio, Suárez, Si Alvarado, Tambunting, Tan Angelina, Tan Milagrosa, Tan Sherni, Tejada, Teves, Tiyango, Ting, Tiño, Tolentino, Trenyas, Tugna, Tupas, Ti, Umali, Unavia, Ungab, Uniko, Ui Juliet, Ui Rolando, Ui Bareta, Vargas, Vargas Alfonso, Villarde, Velasco, Velasco Cartera, Veloso, Vergara, Villa Fuerte, Villa Nueva, Villa Rasa Suárez, Villa Rica, Villa Rin, Violago, Yap Arthur, Yap Milencho, Yap Victor, Yu, Zamora María Carmen, Zamora Ronaldo, Zarate Zubiri.
With 215 voting in the affirmative, negative, 0 abstention. House Bill 8145 is heard by approved on third and final reading. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, we are in receipt of the bicameral conference committee report on the disagreeing provisions of House Bill Number 5236 and Senate Bill Number 2031, providing for the rank classification in the Philippine National Police. Mr. Speaker, in accordance with our rules, I move that we ratify the said bicameral conference committee report. So move, Mr. Speaker.
Is there any objection? Hearing none. The motion is approved. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move for consideration on third reading of House Bill Number 8322. Printed copies of which were previously distributed to the members of the House pursuant to our rules. For this purpose, Mr. Speaker, my request that the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the bill and thereafter to call for nominal voting. So move, Mr. Speaker.
Is there any objection? Hearing none. The Secretary General is directed to read the title of the bill and thereafter call the roll for nominal voting.
House Bill 8322, enact requiring mandatory compliance by all motorcycle riders and operators to automatically turn on and ride... to automatically turn on and ride with their headlights on at all hours of the day and night on all roads. Roll call of members in consideration of House Bill 8322.
Abaya, Abayon, Abilyanosa, Abu, Abuegat, Cheron, Aco, Pacosta, Acosta, Alba, Adyong, Adbingkula, Agaraw, Agabao, Albano, Alkala, Alejano, Almario, Almonte, Alonte, Alvarez Franz, Alvarez Mercedes, Alvarez Pantalyon, Amante, Amatong, Andaya, Angara Castillo, Antonino, Antonio, Akino, Magsaysay, Aragones, Arbison, Arcillas, Arenas, Atsensa, Umentado, Bagau, Bagatsing, Bagilat, Banal, Barberz, Bersaga, Batawil, Batukabi, Bautista, Bendigan, Bilaro, Belmonte, Feliciano, Belmonte, Jose Christopher, Belmonte, Ricardo, Benitez, Bernos, Bertis, Biazon, Bilyones, Beron, Bolilia, Bondok, Bordado, Bravo, Anthony, Bravo, Maribida, Brosas, Bulut, Beck, Tangkagas, Calderon, Calixtorbiano, Caminero, Campos, Canama, Kari, Casilo, Castelo, Castrofranc, Castropedenil, Katamko, Kaitano, Celeste, Serafica, Siriles, Chavez, Chepeco, Co, Koangko, Culiantes, Cortez, Cortuna, Cosalan, Crisologo, Kuak, Juarezma, Cueva, Dalipid, Datol, Dasa, de Jesus, de Venecia, Defensor del Mar, de Losario, de Losa, Montalia, Dimaporo, Abdullah, Dimaporo, Mohamed Khalid, Duabit, Durano, Di Ilago, Inverga, Erise, Erigel, Ermita, Bohain, Escudero, Espina, Espino, Estrella, Josebio, Ibardone, Farinyas, Fernando, Ferrajuliet, Ferraluiz, Ferriol, Floyrendo, Flores, Fortun, Fortuno, Fuentebelia, Garbin, Garcia, Guendulin, Garcia, Jose Enrique, Garcia, Albano, Garin, Oscar, Granxian, Gassetaya, Gassetan, Heron, Goana, Cristina, Go Mark, Gomez, Gonzaga, Gonzaga, Gonzalez, Alexandria, Gonzalez, Aurelio, Gonzalez, Fernando, Grosetta, Gulyas, Hernandez, Ferdinand, Hernandez, Paul, Herrera, Di, Hofer, Hellosos, Co, Kung Hun, Labadlabad, Laxon, Lagman, Lanete, Laugan, Lasatín, Li, Chon, Li, Lim, Kai Chon, Lovbrigat, Lopez Benhur, Lopez Carlo, Lopez Manuel, Luis, Loyola, Makapagalaroyo, Maceda, Madrona, Malapita, Manalo, Mangawang, Magudadato, Soharto, Magudadato, Sajid, Marcoleta, Marcos, Mourinho, Marquez, Martinez, Matugas, Miliana, Mending, Mendoza, Mercado, Mirasol, Montoro, Nava, Nieto, Noel, Noctrales, Nolasco, Nunez, Malanyao, Ominalo, Campo, Olivares, Ong Edwin, Ong Henry, Ortega Pablo, Ortega, Vininola, Pakia, Paduano, Palma, Pancho, Pangani, Panotes, Papandayan, Pichai, Pico, Pimentel, Pineda, Plaza, Primisias, Agabaskimbo, Radasa, Ramiresato, Ramos, Lampagos, Rabilia, Ropuno, Robes, Rokomora, Rodriguez, Sidro, Rodriguez, Maximo, Roman, Romero, Romaldes, Romaldo, Roques, Akdalan, Sagabaria, Sahales, Alceda, Salimbangon, Salo, Salon, Sanbar, San Doval, San Copan, Santos Rekt, Sarmento, Cesar, Sarmento Edgar Mary, Sabilianos, Semas, Xiao, Silberio, Singson, Swansing, Estralita, Swansing, Horacio, Suarez, Si Alvarado, Tambunting, Tan Angelina, Tan Milagrosa, Tan Sherni, Tejada, Teves, Chanco, Tingting, Talintino, Trenya, Stugna, Tupasti, Umali, Unavia, Ungab, Uniko, Ui Juliet, Ui Rolando, Ui Barreta, Vargas, Vargas, Alfonso, Vilarde, Velasco, Velasco, Cartera, Veloso, Vergara, Bilia Fuerte, Bilianueva, Biliarasa, Suarez, Biliarica, Biliarin, Gilago, Yap Arthur, Yap Milencia, Yap Victor, Yu, Zamora, Maria Carmen, Zamora, Ronaldo, Zarate, Zubiri.
With 215 voting in the affirmative, zero negative, zero abstention, House Bill 8322 is hereby approved on third and final reading. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move for consideration on third reading of House Bill Number 8368, printed copies of which were previously distributed to the members of the House pursuant to our rules. For this purpose, Mr. Speaker, may I request the Secretary General to read the title of the bill and thereafter to call for nominal voting. So move, Mr. Speaker.
Is there any objection? Hearing none. The Secretary General is directed to read the title of the bill and thereafter call the rule for nominal voting.
House Bill 8368, an act strengthening the regulation of employment of foreign nationals amending for the purpose Articles 40, 41, and 42 of Presidential Decree Number 442 as amended, otherwise known as the Labor Code of the Philippines. Roll call of members in consideration of House Bill 8368. Abaya, Abayon, Abilyanosa, Abu, Abuegat, Cheron, Aco, Pacosta, Acosta, Alba, Adyong, Adbingkula, Agaraw, Agabao, Albano, Alkala, Alejano, Almario, Almonte, Alonte, Alvarez Franz, Alvarez Mercedes, Alvarez Pantalyon, Amante, Amatong, Andaya, Angara Castillo, Antonino, Antonio, Akino, Magsaysay, Aragones, Arbison, Arcillas, Arenas, Atsensa, Umentado, Bagau, Bagatsing, Bagilat, Banal, Barberz, Bersaga, Batawil, Batukabi, Bautista, Bendigan, Bilaro, Belmonte, Feliciano, Belmonte, Jose Christopher, Belmonte, Ricardo, Benitez, Bernos, Bertis, Biazon, Bilyones, Beron, Bolilia, Bondok, Bordado, Bravo, Anthony, Bravo, Maribida, Brosas, Bulut, Beck, Tangkagas, Calderon, Calixtorbiano, Caminero, Campos, Canama, Kari, Casilo, Castelo, Castrofranc, Castropedenil, Katamko, Kaitano, Celeste, Serafica, Siriles, Chavez, Chepeco, Co, Koangko, Culiantes, Cortez, Cortuna, Cosalan, Crisologo, Kuak, Juarezma, Cueva, Dalipid, Datol, Dasa, de Jesus, de Venecia, Defensor del Mar, de Losario, de Losa, Montalia, Dimaporo, Abdullah, Dimaporo, Mohamed Khalid, Duabit, Durano, Di Ilago, Inverga, Erise, Erigel, Ermita, Bohain, Escudero, Espina, Espino, Estrella, Josebio, Ibardone, Farinyas, Fernando, Ferrajuliet, Ferraluiz, Ferriol, Floyrendo, Flores, Fortun, Fortuno, Fuentebelia, Garbin, Garcia, Guendulin, Garcia, Jose Enrique, Garcia, Albano, Garin, Oscar, Granxian, Gassetaya, Gassetan, Heron, Goana, Cristina, Go Mark, Gomez, Gonzaga, Gonzalez, Alexandria, Gonzalez, Aurelio, Gonzalez, Fernando, Grosetta, Gulyas, Hernandez, Ferdinand, Hernandez, Paul, Herrera, Di, Hofer, Halusos, Sabierco, Kung Hun, Labadlabad, Laxon, Lagman, Yaneta, Laugan, Lasatín, Li, Chon, Li, Lim, Kai Chon, Lovbrigat, Lopez Benhur, Lopez Carlo, Lopez Manuel, Loyola, Makapagalaroyo, Maceda, Madrona, Malapita, Manalo, Mangawang, Magudadato, Soharto, Magudadato, Sajid, Marcoleta, Marcos, Mourinho, Marquez, Martinez, Matugas, Miliana, Mending, Mendoza, Mercado, Mirasol, Montoro, Nava, Nieto, Noel, Noctrales, Nolasco, Nunez, Malanyao, Ominalo, Campo, Olivares, Ong Edwin, Ong Henry, Ong Ortega Pablo, Ortega, Vininola, Pakia, Paduano, Palma, Pancho, Pangani, Panotes, Papandayan, Pichai, Pico, Pimentel, Pineda, Plaza, Primisias, Agabaskimbo, Radasa, Ramiresato, Ramos, Lampagos, Rabilia, Ropuno, Robes, Rokomora, Rodriguez, Sidro, Rodriguez, Maximo, Roman, Romero, Romaldes, Romaldo, Roques, Akdalan, Sagabaria, Sahales, Alceda, Salimbangon, Salo, Salon, Sanbar, San Doval, San Copan, Santos Rekt, Sarmento, Cesar, Sarmento Edgar Mary, Sabilianos, Semas, Xiao, Silberio, Singson, Swansing, Estralita, Swansing, Horacio, Suarez, Si Alvarado, Tambunting, Tan Angelina, Tan Milagrosa, Tan Sherni, Tejada, Teves, Chanco, Tingting, Talintino, Trenya, Stugna, Tupasti, Umali, Unavia, Ungab, Uniko, Ui Juliet, Ui Rolando, Ui Barreta, Vargas, Vargas, Alfonso, Vilarde, Velasco, Velasco, Cartera, Veloso, Vergara, Bilia Fuerte, Bilianueva, Biliarasa, Suarez, Biliarica, Biliarin, Gilago, Yap Arthur, Yap Milencia, Yap Victor, Yu, Zamora, Maria Carmen, Zamora, Ronaldo, Zarate, Zubiri.
With 215 voting in the affirmative, zero negative, zero abstention, House Bill 8368 is hereby approved on third and final reading. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we acknowledge the guest of Deputy Speaker, the Honorable Arbison, namely Mr. Abdel Ani and Assemblywoman Rudja Ani who are present in the plenary today.
Please rise to be recognized. Welcome to the House of Representatives. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, under the same motion for third reading, House Bill Number 8378, and therefore we request the Secretary General to read the title of the bill and thereafter to call for a rule for nominal voting.
Is there an objection? Hearing none. The Secretary General is directed to read the title of the bill and thereafter call the rule for nominal voting.
House Bill 8378, an act amending Republic Act Number 4200 entitled, "An Act to Prohibit and Penalize Wiretapping and Other Related Violations of the Privacy of Communication and for Other Purposes." Roll call of members in consideration of House Bill 8378. Abaya, Abayon, Abilyanosa, Abu, Abuegat, Cheron, Aco, Pacosta, Acosta, Alba, Adyong, Adbingkula, Agaraw, Agabao, Albano, Alkala, Alejano, Almario, Almonte, Alonte, Alvarez Franz, Alvarez Mercedes, Alvarez Pantalyon, Amante, Amatong, Andaya, Angara Castillo, Antonino, Antonio, Akino, Magsaysay, Aragones, Arbison, Arcillas, Arenas, Atsensa, Umentado, Bagau, Bagatsing, Bagilat, Banal, Barberz, Bersaga, Batawil, Batukabi, Bautista, Bendigan, Bilaro, Belmonte, Feliciano, Belmonte, Jose Christopher, Belmonte, Ricardo, Benitez, Bernos, Bertis, Biazon, Bilyones, Beron, Bolilia, Bondok, Bordado, Bravo, Anthony, Bravo, Maribida, Brosas, Bulut, Beck, Tangkagas, Calderon, Calixtorbiano, Caminero, Campos, Canama, Kari, Casilo, Castelo, Castrofranc, Castropedenil, Katamko, Kaitano, Celeste, Serafica, Siriles, Chavez, Chepeco, Co, Koangko, Culiantes, Cortez, Cortuna, Cosalan, Crisologo, Kuak, Juarezma, Cueva, Dalipid, Datol, Dasa, de Jesus, de Venecia, Defensor del Mar, de Losario, de Losa, Montalia, Dimaporo, Abdullah, Dimaporo, Mohamed Khalid, Duabit, Durano, Di Ilago, Inverga, Erise, Erigel, Ermita, Bohain, Escudero, Espina, Espino, Estrella, Josebio, Ibardone, Farinyas, Fernando, Ferrajuliet, Ferraluiz, Ferriol, Floyrendo, Flores, Fortun, Fortuno, Fuentebelia, Garbin, Garcia, Guendulin, Garcia, Jose Enrique, Garcia, Albano, Garin, Oscar, Granxian, Gassetaya, Gassetan, Heron, Goana, Cristina, Go Mark, Gomez, Gonzaga, Gonzalez, Alexandria, Gonzalez, Aurelio, Gonzalez, Fernando, Grosetta, Gulyas, Hernandez, Ferdinand, Hernandez, Paul, Herrera, Di, Hofer, Halusos, Sabier, Co, Kung Hun, Labadlabad, Laxon, Lagman, Lanete, Laugan, Lasatín, Li, Chon, Li, Lim, Kai Chon, Lovbrigat, Lopez Benhur, Lopez Carlo, Lopez Manuel, Luis, Loyola, Makapagalaroyo, Maceda, Madrona, Malapita, Manalo, Mangawang, Magudadato, Soharto, Magudadato, Sajid, Marcoleta, Marcos, Mourinho, Marquez, Martinez, Matugas, Miliana, Mending, Mendoza, Mercado, Mirasol, Montoro, Nava, Nieto, Noel, Noctrales, Nolasco, Nunez, Malanyao, Ominalo, Campo, Olivares, Ong Edwin, Ong Henry, Ortega, Pablo, Ortega, Vininola, Pakia, Paduano, Palma, Pancho, Pangani, Panotes, Papandayan, Pichai, Pico, Pimentel, Pineda, Plaza, Primisias, Agabaskimbo, Radasa, Ramiresato, Ramos, Lampagos, Rabilia, Ropuno, Robes, Rokomora, Rodriguez, Sidro, Rodriguez, Maximo, Roman, Romero, Romaldes, Romaldo, Roques, Akdalan, Sagabaria, Sahales, Alceda, Salimbangon, Salo, Salon, Sanbar, San Doval, San Copan, Santos Rekt, Sarmento, Cesar, Sarmento Edgar Mary, Sabilianos, Semas, Xiao, Silberio, Singson, Swansing, Estralita, Swansing, Horacio, Suarez, Si Alvarado, Tambunting, Tan Angelina, Tan Milagrosa, Tan Sherni, Tejada, Teves, Chanco, Tingting, Talintino, Trenya, Stugna, Tupasti, Umali, Unavia, Ungab, Uniko, Ui Juliet, Ui Rolando, Ui Barreta, Vargas, Vargas, Alfonso, Vilarde, Velasco, Velasco, Cartera, Veloso, Vergara, Bilia Fuerte, Bilianueva, Biliarasa, Suarez, Biliarica, Biliarin, Gilago, Yap Arthur, Yap Milencia, Yap Victor, Yu, Zamora, Maria Carmen, Zamora, Ronaldo, Zarate, Zubiri.
With 216 voting in the affirmative, zero negative, zero abstention, House Bill 8378 is hereby approved on third and final reading. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, under the same motion on third reading, House Bill 8381, and for this reason, we request that the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the bill and thereafter to call for a rule for nominal voting.
Is there an objection? Hearing none. The Secretary General is directed to read the title of the bill and thereafter call for a rule for nominal voting.
House Bill 8381, an act granting Filipino citizenship to Margarita Milian Ortigas. Roll call of members in consideration of House Bill 8381. Abaya, Abayon, Abilyanosa, Abu, Abuegat, Cheron, Aco, Pacosta, Acosta, Alba, Adyong, Adbingkula, Agaraw, Agabao, Albano, Alkala, Alejano, Almario, Almonte, Alonte, Alvarez Franz, Alvarez Mercedes, Alvarez Pantalyon, Amante, Amatong, Andaya, Angara Castillo, Antonino, Akino, Magsaysay, Aragones, Arbison, Arcillas, Arenas, Atsensa, Umentado, Bagau, Bagatsing, Bagilat, Banal, Barberz, Bersaga, Batawil, Batukabi, Bautista, Bendigan, Bilaro, Belmonte, Feliciano, Belmonte, Jose Christopher, Belmonte, Ricardo, Benitez, Bernos, Bertis, Biazon, Bilyones, Beron, Bolilia, Bondok, Bordado, Bravo, Anthony, Bravo, Maribida, Brosas, Bulut, Beck, Tangkagas, Calderon, Calixtorbiano, Caminero, Campos, Canama, Kari, Casilo, Castelo, Castrofranc, Castropedenil, Katamko, Kaitano, Celeste, Serafica, Siriles, Chavez, Chepeco, Co, Koangko, Culiantes, Cortez, Cortuna, Cosalan, Crisologo, Kuak, Juarezma, Cueva, Dalipid, Datol, Dasa, de Jesus, de Venecia, Defensor del Mar, de Losario, de Losa, Montalia, Dimaporo, Abdullah, Dimaporo, Mohamed Khalid, Duabit, Durano, Di Ilago, Inverga, Erise, Erigel, Ermita, Bohain, Escudero, Espina, Espino, Estrella, Josebio, Ibardone, Farinyas, Fernando, Ferrajuliet, Ferraluiz, Ferriol, Floyrendo, Flores, Fortun, Fortuno, Fuentebelia, Garbin, Garcia, Guendulin, Garcia, Jose Enrique, Garcia, Albano, Garin, Oscar, Granxian, Gassetaya, Gassetan, Heron, Goana, Cristina, Go Mark, Gomez, Gonzaga, Gonzalez, Alexandria, Gonzalez, Aurelio, Gonzalez, Fernando, Grosetta, Gulyas, Hernandez, Ferdinand, Hernandez, Paul, Herrera, Di, Hofer, Halusos, Sabierco, Kung Hun, Labadlabad, Laxon, Lagman, Yaneta, Laugan, Lasatín, Li, Chon, Li, Lim, Kai Chon, Lovbrigat, Lopez Benhur, Lopez Carlo, Lopez Manuel, Loyola, Makapagalaroyo, Maceda, Madrona, Malapita, Manalo, Mangawang, Magudadato, Soharto, Magudadato, Sajid, Marcoleta, Marcos, Mourinho, Marquez, Martinez, Matugas, Miliana, Mending, Mendoza, Mercado, Mirasol, Montoro, Nava, Nieto, Noel, Noctrales, Nolasco, Nunez, Malanyao, Ominalo, Campo, Olivares, Ong Edwin, Ong Henry, Ortega Pablo, Ortega, Vininola, Pakia, Paduano, Palma, Pancho, Pangani, Panotes, Papandayan, Pichai, Pico, Pimentel, Pineda, Plaza, Primisias, Agabaskimbo, Radasa, Ramiresato, Ramos, Lampagos, Rabilia, Ropuno, Robes, Rokomora, Rodriguez, Sidro, Rodriguez, Maximo, Roman, Romero, Romaldes, Romaldo, Roques, Akdalan, Sagabaria, Sahales, Alceda, Salimbangon, Salo, Salon, Sanbar, San Doval, San Copan, Santos Rekt, Sarmento, Cesar, Sarmento Edgar Mary, Sabilianos, Semas, Xiao, Silberio, Singson, Swansing, Estralita, Swansing, Horacio, Suarez, Si Alvarado, Tambunting, Tan Angelina, Tan Milagrosa, Tan Sherni, Tejada, Teves, Chanco, Tingting, Talintino, Trenya, Stugna, Tupasti, Umali, Unavia, Ungab, Uniko, Ui Juliet, Ui Rolando, Ui Barreta, Vargas, Vargas, Alfonso, Vilarde, Velasco, Velasco, Cartera, Veloso, Vergara, Bilia Fuerte, Bilianueva, Biliarasa, Suarez, Biliarica, Biliarin, Gilago, Yap Arthur, Yap Milencia, Yap Victor, Yu, Zamora, Maria Carmen, Zamora, Ronaldo, Zarate, Zubiri.
With 216 voting in the affirmative, zero negative, zero abstention, House Bill 8381 is approved, is hereby approved on third and final reading. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, today being a Monday, I move that we open the privilege hour.
Is there an objection? Hearing none. The motion is approved.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we recognize the Honorable Rita Robes to avail the privilege hour.
Congresswoman Robes, is now recognized to avail the privilege hour.
Mr. Speaker, my distinguished colleagues, I rise in a matter of personal and collective privilege to address the prevailing water woes in the city of San Jose del Monte, who shall represent in this chamber. I remember the English poet W. H. Auden having once said, "Thousands have lived without love, but not one without water." True enough, in this troubled water, love is getting to be more optional, but such is not the case with water, unlike with what most would believe. This wood cannot live only with oil and money, as with food, water is indispensable to life, it is life in itself. But for all its worth, to the lives of Filipinos, it pays big wonder why could such a premier water regulating agency, the Metropolitan Water Works and Sewage System, or MWSS, had become too obvious of the vitality of water. Let the fact speak for itself. On January 28, 2014, the MWSS, the provincial government of Blakan, the local water utilities administration, and the San Jose del Monte water district entered into a memorandum of agreement, which stipulated among others, the grant by the MWSS on additional 30 million of liters per day, or 30 MLD, of raw water allocation to San Jose del Monte water district. This is on top of the water district's entitlement to 50 MLD, which it had since 1993. The justification for such additional 30 MLD allocation was based on the overriding need to cater to the water supply requirements of various housing projects of the National Housing Authority in the city of San Jose del Monte. Prominent of these housing projects are the medium-rise Pleasant View Residences in Barangay Graceville, made of 30 buildings with 60 units per building, home to 1,800 families. Their primary problem, no water supply. The Tower of the Phase 6 project, located between Barangay's Graceville and Gaya Gaya, made of 9,000 housing units and occupied by 9,000 families. Their main problem, limited water supply. The Heroesville 1, Expansion 1 to 3, project in Barangay Gaya Gaya, built with 3,000 units, hosting 3,000 families, homeless families occupied with the units even without a certainty of electricity and of sufficient supply of clean and potable water. The Heroesville 3, Phase 1 and 2 in Barangay Gaya Gaya, were constructed of 1,000 units. were constructed on one thousand units, occupied by one thousand families, experiencing as well water and electricity problems. The San Jose del Monte Heights in barangay Muzon has four thousand seventy-five family occupants, equivalent to twenty thousand three hundred seventy-five individuals, all in water crisis situation. And the massive NHA Pabahay Two Thousand in barangay Muzon, with seven thousand forty-five family occupants, likewise experiencing shortage in potable water supply for such a long period of time. But this is not all that we worry about, Mr. Speaker. Dear colleagues, we now see a replication of a similar problem related to our water woes looming in the impending horizon. Five thousand more, five thousand five thousand more families are scheduled to be relocated in San Jose del Monte city within the last quarter of the current year. However, to set the record straight, this latest batch of relocation was approved by the previous national government, administration by the local government unit of San Jose del Monte City. And yet again, as with all our relocations, this one is likewise wanting of strategic planning. They did not ensure a semblance of a community in this impending relocation and without adequate provision for government infrastructure, schools, hospitals, sources of livelihood, electrification, clean water supply, and all. Thus, we find ourselves again scrambling for solutions to a familiar problem of low supply but higher demand of water because of our people. Consistently, we see the same parade of problems in these relocation projects of the NHA. And they all gravitate towards what one can truly live without water. At this point, I must say even commendable note that the present NHA General Manager Marcelino Escalada has had a clear grasp of the problem and of the equivalent solution. Ang direkso ang aming tinatahak nila GM Escalada ay iisa. Ito ay upang maisaayos at mailipat sa pangalang lungsod ng San Jose del Monte ang pagpapasayos ng mga nasimulang problema tungkol sa kahulangan ng tubig at sa mga relocation. Sa puntong ito, malugot ko pong binabalita at hindi isang kwento lamang napag-usapan na sa kabila ng kahulangan sa water utility services sa mga relocation projects inabanggit. Ang ilan dito ay napagkalubna ngunit hindi nga po libre. Sa mga lehitibong benepisyo o benepesyaro ng pabahay para maiwasan ang kadamay, at ito ay nagisanirin upang makalikom ng karagdagang pondo ang National Housing Authority. Katunayan, ilan sa mga ito ay lupang kinakatayoan ng mga parokia, gaya ng Christ the King, Sagrada Familia of San Dorosario Parishes, napawang ikalawang distrito ng lungsod ng San Jose del Monte. Trusting that MWSS will make good in its obligation under the agreement that is to provide additional raw water allocation. The San Jose Water District constructed in two thousand seventeen a water treatment plan or called WTP Three. However, due to limited funds, the Water District managed only to construct a ten million of liter capacity treatment plan. Although the facility may be expanded to thirty MLD soon as funds would later allow. And this is now decided part. Despite the completion of the Water Treatment Plan Three and after sending several letters of requests, the San Jose del Monte Water District is still unable to draw water from the neither MWSS and the common purpose facilities operations as of today. Still no location, still no relief still no relief inside in this mounting and compounding water woes in San Jose del Monte City. Thanks be to detachment, if not to the apathy of this premier water regulating agency of the government, it appears not now that our recovery is never ending. We have long borne the burden of receiving and giving new life to thousands of displaced population of Metro Manila, Venezuela, San Juan, Quezon City, and other nearby and to include Makati. Now there is yet another one that places our endurance in a supreme test, coping with water crisis. Let me later rate. For the record, Mr. Speaker, my dear colleagues, that this Water Treatment Plan Three facility long been completed and was so designed to augment all these water woes in the city. Katako-takot na pagbabakbak sa amin sa social media. Katako-takot na mura ang inaabot ng aming pamamalakad na hindi naming kasalanan. The means to achieve this is through the grant of additional water allocation from the MWSS, its very contractual obligation under January twenty-eighth, two thousand fourteen. Memorandum of Agreement which we continue to ignore by inaction for reasons only known to them. Without the ten MLD water supply to water treatment Plan Three Facility, the San Jose del Monte Water District will not be able to farm out water, not only to those families but to the existing relocation as well. Having we had experienced diligence and prudence in all our efforts of addressing water shortages in our city, we could have better understood where MWSS is coming from. Needless to say, we have already done everything necessary and within the scope of our powers to comply with that memorandum of agreement where the MWSS is a vital party. It only to safeguard the interests of our people, but due to the inaction of MWSS, many of our families are now at risk bearing the brunt of shortage. I appeal, as I do now, to this august body to call upon MWSS through Engineer Ramon Fabul to immediately act on the long overdue request of San Jose Water District for almost two years and ten months. Kaya po kami ay nagkukulang sa tubig. Hindi huuubra na porki po mahirap hindi na maliligo. Hindi rin po ubra na porki mahirap ay hindi rin po kakain ng tama at malinis sa pagkain. Hindi rin po ubra mga kasama ko sa paglilingkon na mga ang mga inilipat natin sa lungsod ng San Jose del Monte ay pababayaan na lamang. Ako po ay muling makikiusap sa lahat po ng aking mga kasama na tulungan po ako at ang aming mga distrito, ang aming distrito sa pagtaguyot ng aming pangarap na mapuksan ang WTP Three dahil may problema po kami talaga sa raw water. Hindi po ito karapat-dapat sa aming po nagdaraan ng tubig, pero kapung mismo sa lungsod ng San Jose del Monte ay hindi nabibigyan ng tamang supply ng raw water. I will not take my speech so long, pero po sa aking po mga kasama at sa aking mahal na mga kababayan, inilagda ko po at inilahad ko po ang lahat ng ito dahil gusto ko pong malinawan ang aking mga kasama. In the words of President Rodrigo Robo Duterte, "Working together, let us build a truly robust society where prospects for growth abound and where citizens enjoy a prosperous and comfortable life." Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Thank you, my dear colleagues. Magandang hapon po sa inyong lahat. And God bless us all.
Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, next to avail of the privilege hour is the Honorable Anthony Bravo. May we recognize the Honorable Anthony Bravo for his privileged speech.
Honorable Bravo is recognized to avail the privilege hour.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Distinguished colleague, I rise in a matter of personal and collective privilege to express my sincere and heartfelt appreciation to all Filipinos who offer their prayers, will wishes, and support after the humble representation figured in helicopter accident in Capa Starlak, along with seven other passengers and four crews. Before I narrate what happened, allow me to acknowledge our officers from the Office of Legislative Affairs of the Armed Forces of the Philippines led by General Jess Estuesta, who is in the gallery right now. The Office of Legislative Affairs is one of the organizers of the activity in Starlak. On Thursday, November twenty-two, I was with the House of Representative contingent invited by the Armed Forces of the Philippine's Office of Legislative Affairs to attend a legislative stakeholders engagement activity in Capa Starlak. In the morning, we participated in a record firing at Camp Odonil which rated our marksmanship skills. This was conducted at a training in doctrine command of the Philippine Army. I am a military reservist, Mr. Speaker. This is to set the record straight as to the purpose of my participation in this activity. In the afternoon, a live-fire demonstration was scheduled at Crow Valley Gantry Range. We were fired by a socle helicopter from Camp Odonil to Colonel Ernesto Ravina Airways, or more popularly known as Crow Valley. The helicopter was piloted by Major Mark de los Reyes and First Lieutenant Henry Cabanayan, both of the Philippine Air Force. Along with me in the helicopter was former House Representative Secretary General Attorney Cesar Pareja, Colonel Arthur Baybayan, Sergeant at Arms of the Commission Appointment, Baltasar Reyes, Romeo Almonte, Mario Jean Barreto, First Lieutenant Belbin Detea, and Daisy DeLima. The helicopter was on its final approach when it suddenly turned on its side and fell on the ravine nearby the helipad. The ravine was about thirty feet deep. In a seemingly twist of fate, most of us passengers were spared from serious injuries, except for minor bruises in my arm. I was completely fine and was able to go home after a physical checkup. The same was true with my companions. Ako'y lubos na nagpapasalamat sa pong may kapal at kami protektahan niya sa oras na yon. Kinaailangan basagin ang salamin ng helicopter upang kami makalabas. Maraming salamat sa aking mga kasamahan na tinulungan ako makalabas mula sa helicopter na punoh ng uso. May manakapitan akong isang baging na siyang ginamit ko upang makababa sa mataas na helicopter. I appreciate the members and officials of the Armed Forces and the organizers of the event who promptly rescued us and brought us to the infirmary and to Camp Aquino Station Hospital for treatment. Ngayon po, hayaan niyo ako magpasalamat sa House leadership sa pangunguna ng ating kagalanggalang ni Speaker Gloria Makapagalaroyo sa suporta sa House contingent. Gayon din ang ating Senate counterparts. Lalo-lalo na ako kay Senator Rector Rap Rector, nakasama ko sa naksabing event. Subalit na siya sa helicopter. At gayon din ho, kay Senator Richard Gordon. I would also like to thank the Honorable Victor Yap of the Second District of Starlak for his graciousness for readily offered assistance during the critical time. To the Chinese community, especially Dr. James D., President of the Chinese General Hospital, for offering the facilities of the hospital should I need further medical treatment. And to many others, my family, my friends here in the house who called up and sent messages of concern and expressed willingness to help. Thank you very much. I am also deeply touched by the support of our cooperative leaders representing the fourteen million strong cooperative movement who have been bombarding me with calls and messages after the news broke up until the following day. I couldn't be happier for the multitude's support that you extended to me. My sincere apologies to the members of the media if I was unable to grant your request for interviews. My phone was left in the chopper and it was only recovered the following day. It was indeed a miracle that we survived the accident almost unscathed. However, I feel bad for the pilot who sustained head injuries in the chief aircrew, aircrew, Sergeant Byron Jumano whose arm was broken. I later learned from the reports that Sergeant had to amputate his arm. I wish for his fast recovery and encourage you to continue praying for the safety of our military men. Ang karasang ito ay nag-iwan sa akin ng isang minsahay at naniniwala ako na niluob ng Panginoon na walang mangyari masama sa akin dahil may rompahawakong mission na kailangan ang gampalan sa ating taong bayan. I believe that God has better plans and that this humble representative of COOP Sector has a bigger mission to fulfill. As a grateful servant of God, I commit myself to continue my service and advocacy on poverty alleviation by strengthening our cooperatives and addressing the plight of marginalized farmers, fisherfolks, urban and rural workers, and other marginalized sector, and to advance the welfare of the Filipino in general. While I rejoice I rejoice the second life that God has given all twelve of us in the helicopter, I couldn't slept well knowing that the same incident might happen to others too. I learned that the crash landing in Starlak is the third incident involving socle helicopter of the Philippine Armed Forces. In August twenty-fourteen, a socle helicopter crashed in a louder shore which carried then Fourth Infantry Division Commander Ricardo Bisaya. While he was not injured, two passengers suffered minor injuries. On November eighth, twenty-sixteen, another socle unit also crashed in Puerto Francesa City, where twelve persons were reported injured. Mr. Speaker, I am deeply concerned about the condition of our military aircraft and equipment. We could not afford to have more incidents or accidents because next time might not be as fortunate as what happened to us. I learned that the Philippine Air Force purchased eight police-made socle helicopters[1611.12] as part of its modernization plan. Are these enough to modernize our forces? Mr. Speaker, we cannot afford to lose lives just because of our military aircraft, equipment, facilities, or training of our men are way behind. We need quality military assets with maximum capability. Hence, I call on the government to pursue a genuine modernization of the Armed Forces of the Philippines. We need to develop the AAP in all aspects, such as personnel capacity building, upgrading facilities and equipment, and proper maintenance, Mr. Speaker. The first phase of AAP Modernization Program has ended in 2017. For the second phase, President Duterte recently approved a 300 billion AAP Modernization Plan. I hope that this Congress will help the Executive Department in finding ways and means to fund this program, Mr. Speaker. We also need to craft a policy that will address the tedious process of procurement military assets needed for modernization. In fact, in 2017, COO found or found out that 3.859 billion AAP fund was unutilized and seventy-eight point forty-three percent, or 3.027 billion, was for the AFP's modernization intended for acquisition of military equipment. The AFP cited a stringent requirement of Republic Act 9184 or the Government Reform Act as the reason of such. At this point, may I show to you the audiovisual presentation of some of the specific concern of the AAP that needs legislative attention?
The Armed Forces of the Philippines is the protector of the people and the state. Its goal is to secure the sovereignty of the state and the integrity of the national territory. It has been faring well in fulfilling its constitutional mandate by having prevented and countered a lot of challenges that pose threat to the security of the state and its people. In order for it to effectively confront threats coming from various sources eroding the nation's strength and willpower, the major services have been provided with military reservations to better accommodate their needs and enhancing their capabilities. Philippine Army. The Fort Magseisai Military Reservation, or FMMR, was established by then-President Ramon Magseisai on 19 December 1955 through the Presidential Proclamation Number 237, covering seventy-three thousand hectares, straddling along six municipalities and one city of the provinces of Nueva Isija and Aurora Quezon Province. However, due to seven presidential proclamations, one Republic Act, one executive order, the original land area was reduced to forty-five thousand eight hundred thirty-seven hectares. Fort Magseisai is currently the home of the Seventh Infantry Division, which is designated as the First Territorial Defense Division, our contingency force for both internal and external threats. It is also the home of the Special Operations Command, which is the AFP's national maneuver force and instrumental for winning various campaigns such as the Sambong Siege and Liberation of Marawi. Apart from being the headquarters of the Seventh Infantry Division, it also houses nine tenant army unit and has an airstrip that is 1.6 kilometers long. Furthermore, several government projects are also inside Fort Magseisai Military Reservation. Fort Magseisai Military Reservation is the only facility that can cater to the AFP's combat readiness training area, which is divided into twenty-two different training areas within the reservation. These training areas are vital to the enhancement of our tactics, techniques, and procedures and combine arms operations and joint operations, which is the key in defending our sovereignty and our national security. However, issues and concerns besieged the real estate management of Fort Magseisai Military Reservation. First is the overlapping boundaries and presence of informal settlers. And second is the overlapping claims. There are ten known major claimants to parcels of land within the reservation, including two Dumagat tribes. Therefore, your Armed Forces through the Philippine Army requests full legislative support in ensuring that FMMR remains devotedly a military reservation not open to alienation and disposition. In addition, the location of Fort Magseisai Military Reservation is of strategic importance because it provides quick access for the deployment of forces to any situation or emergency that might arise. With your support, we can make Military Reservation a world-class military hub that can provide professional and world-class Filipino soldiers.
Malipo, maraming salamat. Maraming salamat, Mr. Speaker, distinguished colleague.
Majority Leader?
Mr. Speaker, I move that the privileged speech of the Honorable...
Honorable Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we recognize the Honorable Bertis for his interpellation.
Honorable Bertis is recognized to interpellate?
Thank you so much, Mr. Speaker, Honorable Majority Leader. Mr. Speaker, this representation joins the multitude of twelve wishers from all around the globe for the well-being of our dear colleague, Deputy Minority Leader Anthony M. Bravo. As we know, last November 22, while attending an official legislative function in Starlak, the military helicopter carrying Congressman Anthony Bravo together with our former Secretary-General Attorney Cesar Pareja and number of legislative personnel crashed landed and tumbled into a deep ravine. The pilot, co-pilot, crew, and most of the passengers suffered major injuries. Miraculously, Congressman Anthony M. Bravo came out with just a minor bruises. Antibay mo, Bravo. How he escaped in the midst of extreme confusions, blinded by engulfing smoke from the helicopter in flames with only three stopping it from rolling down the ravine and still managed to maneuver out of the safety on his own in nothing less than extraordinary. As news of the incident went out, I was swamped, nonstop by countless calls and messages of concerns to Congressman Anthony Bravo from OFWs from all around the world and as well as our honorable colleague. I was so amazed as I witnessed messages of love for Congressman Anthony Bravo flowing through me. Indeed, it was an experience to be behold. Mr. Speaker, I am not surprised to see the fourteen million members of cooperatives in the country expressing their concerns to Congressman Anthony M. Bravo. He being the champion as well as the bastions of the cooperative movement and the big difference in terms of efforts in the retaining the tax exemptions for the cooperatives. But I wonder, what about the OFWs? It occurred to me, Mr. Speaker, that our dear friend Congressman Anthony M. Bravo has been working with me in introducing to the OFWs the benefits of being a cooperative and assisting them, informing themselves as cooperatives as well. This is why OFWs know Congressman Anthony Bravo very well. This is why they exhibited so much love and appreciation for him. Natatandaan ko po si Anthony Bravo or ang Honorable Anthony Bravo ay naging OFW rin sa UAE. Also, Mr. Speaker, I am delighted to see Congressman Anthony M. Bravo dashing and energetic as ever in the halls of Congress. Congratulations to your award as a rifle expert. My hats off to you, my friend, for demonstrating extraordinary courage in extraordinary times, a trait worthy of emulations. May God continue protecting and bless you, Congressman Anthony Bravo. Thank you, Mr. Speaker, Mr. Majority Leader.
Thank you very much, distinguished Representative of the OFW for that support and here. Thank you.
Mr. Speaker? Mr. Speaker, may I be recognized?
Honorable is recognized to interpellate?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Would the lucky gentleman willing to answer some questions?
With honors.
Ang katanungan lang ho ng representanteng ito ay during the time that you ride that chopper, ilang minuto, ilang oras na po ba kayong nasa area at...
I think if I remember rightly, it's about five to eight minutes from Camp Odonil.
So hindi ho kalayuan 'yung inyong pinanggalingan sa inyong pupuntahan?
Hindi ho. Napakalapit lang ho ng Crow Valley.
At ilan po ba kayong nakasakay sa chopper?
Labing isaho kami na kasakay lahat, kasama ang pilot.
Ito naman pong ating military chopper ay nasa kondisyon at sa pananaw po ninyo ay tama lang ho 'yung kargang mga pasahero?
Actually, twelve passenger capacity siya. Kung labing isaho kami ay tama lang ho siya. At maganda naman ho 'yung lipad ng helicopter. Nagkataon lang ho na bago lumapag, ay parang nahagipaw kami ng malakas na hangin.
Sa pananaw po ninyo, dahil itong representanteng ito ay nagagalak na isa kayo sa napakapalad na sabihin natin suposto be magiging biktima ng ating mga military equipment. At ang akin pong pinangangambaan, samantalang kayo ay bihirang sumakay sa mga ganitong kagamitan ng military. Samantalang ang ating mga magigiting nasundalo, eh halos araw-araw, 'yan po ang ginagamit nila sa maraming bagay, sa kanilang mga tungkulin, sa pagre-rescue ng ating mga kababayan na naiipit sa kaguluhan at saka sa masamang panahon. Representanteng ito ay nangangamba dahil sa palagi-hong nasusuong sa peligro 'yung atinhong mga kasundaluhan or ating mga government employees na kadalasan, ito po 'yung ating ginagamit na mode of transport, especially when we are going into far-flung areas. Ang akin lang-hong katanungan sa inyo is ano po ba ang sa pananaw ninyo, pananaw ninyo, ang ating dapat na kailangan na suporta, na kailangan ibigay sa ating mga ahensya ng military at kapulisan para ho sa kanilang mga kagamitan ay masigurado natin na ito ay nasa good working standard ng ating pangangailangan?
Sa akin nga-hong pananaw dahil nga-hong nabanggit ko 'yung ito sa aking privileged speech na pagtuunan ng pansin at let's pursue genuine modernization of the Armed Forces to include capacity building, to include application of equipment and facilities to maximum capability. Hindi ho kailangan na i-downgrade ang isang equipment dahil mahina po ang pondo, umababa 'yung pondo. Kung di, pundoan po natin ang tama para ho talagang magkaroon ng capability to the maximum capacity ang ating Armed Forces.
'Yan po 'yung inyong position ay sinusuportahan ho ng representanteng ito at tingin ko naman ho lahat ng ating mga kasamahan dito sa Kongreso sapagkat sa atin nagmumula ang kanilang taon-taon na pangangailangan ng pondo. At sabi nga natin, taon-taon sila ay lumalapit sa atin at tayo ang siyang nag-aaproba ng mga pondong 'yan. Sabi nga, may kasabihan, ang ating mga kasundaluhan eh mas nanaisip pa nilang sila ay masawi sa pakikipaglaban sa kanilang mga katunggali kesa naman ho mamatay sa sariling kagamitan. Kaya itohong representanteng ito ay sumusuporta sa adhikain at sa iyong motion to investigate ang tamang paggasta at tamang pagbili ng mga equipment ng ating mga military. Hindi lamang ho sa military, kahit ho sa any government agencies na namimili ng kanilang mga gamit na sabi mga ninyo, ang kailangan ho is we should maximize our resources at sa pamamagitan ng pagbili ng mga tamang kasangkapan at nasa kalidad na kasangkapan. Maraming salamat po, Mr. Speaker.
Maraming salamat, distinguished colleague, Honorable Arnold T.
Majority Leader?
Mr. Speaker, I move that we refer the speech of the Honorable Bravo to the Committee on Rules.
The speech of Honorable Bravo be referred to the Committee on Rules for proper disposal. Majority Leader?
Mr. Speaker, I move that we take up unfinished business. Mr. Speaker, may we draw that motion, please? Mr. Speaker, I move that we suspend proceedings.
Is there an objection? Hearing none, motion is approved. Session resume?
Mr. Speaker, we are still in the privileged hour. And with that, I move that we refer the earlier speech of the Honorable Rita Robes to the Committee on Rules.
The speech of the Honorable Robes is be referred to the Committee on Rules.
Before we proceed, Mr. Speaker, may we greet the guests of the Honorable Munir Arbison, the our Mayor Eli... Asmadon, and Mayor Boyet Elaji and Spouse.
Please rise to be recognized. Welcome to the House of Representatives. Majority Leader?
Mr. Speaker, there being no other members who wish to avail of the privileged hour, I move that we close the privileged hour.
Is there any objection? Hearing none, the privileged hour is closed.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we transmit all the bills that we approved on third reading today immediately to the Senate.
Is there any objection? Hearing none, motion is approved.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we take up unfinished business.
Is there any objection? Hearing none, motion is approved.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we resume our consideration of House Bill Number 8618. This is contained in Committee Report 934. And please direct our Secretariat to read the title of the measure.
Is there any objection? Hearing none, the Secretary-General is directed to read the title of the bill.
House Bill 8618, An Act Amending Sections 141, 142, and 143 of Republic Act Number 8424 as amended, otherwise known as the National Revenue Code of 1997.
Majority Leader?
Mr. Speaker, the parliamentary status is that we are in the period of sponsorship and debate. And I move that we recognize the distinguished Chairperson of the Committee on Ways and Means, the Honorable Geng Swan Sing.
The Honorable Swan Sing is recognized?
Mr. Speaker, we are ready to accept questions.
Majority Leader?
Mr. Speaker, I move for a brief suspension.
Session suspended? Session resume.
Mr. Speaker, there being no members who wish to interpolate the sponsor, I move that we close the period of sponsorship and debate.
Is there any objection? Hearing nan, the motion is approved.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we open the period of committee amendments.
Is there an objection? Hearing nan, the motion is approved.
There being no committee amendments, Mr. Speaker, I move that we close the period of committee amendments.
Is there any objection? The committee on amendment is closed.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we open the period of individual amendments.
Is there any objection? Hearing nan, the individual amendment is approved, is opened.
Mr. Speaker, there being no individual amendments, I move that we close the period of individual amendments.
Is there an objection? Hearing nan, motion is approved.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we approve on second reading, House Bill Number 8618.
All those who are in favor of House Bill 8618, say aye. Those who oppose, say nay. I have it, House Bill 8618 is hereby approved on second reading.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we take up bills on second reading.
Is there an objection? Hearing nan, motion is approved.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we take up House Bill Number 8645, contained in Committee Report 951 and please direct our Secretary General to read the title of the measure.
Is there any objection? Hearing nan, the Secretary General is directed to read the title of the bill.
House Bill 8645, An Act Amending Sections 22, 24, 25, 27, 28, 29, 30, 32, 34, 37, 38, 39, 42, 451, 52, 54, 56, 57, 73, 108, 121, 122, 123, 174, 176, 179, 181, 182, 183, 184, 185, 186, 187, 188, 198, and 199 and repeating Sections 127, 175, 177, 178, 180, 192, and 183, all under Republic Act Number 8424, otherwise known as the National Internal Revenue Code of 1997, as amended and for other purposes.
Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we open the period of sponsorship and debate.
Is there any objection? Hearing nan, the motion is approved.
To sponsor the measure, Mr. Speaker, I move that we recognize the distinguished Chairperson of the Committee on Ways and Means. I move that we recognize the Honorable Lady from the First District of Nueva Ecija, the Honorable Estrilita Swan Sing.
The Honorable Swan Sing is recognized?
A pleasant afternoon to the distinguished ladies and gentlemen of this august body. Once again, I stand before you with high hope on your support for this important piece of legislation that covers the fourth package of the Duterte Administration's Comprehensive Tax Reform Program. It was once said by then-US President Ronald Reagan, "Government's view of the economy could be summed up in a few short phrases. If it moves, tax it. If it keeps moving, regulate it. And if it stops moving, subsidize it." This bill complements the recently passed tax reform for Accelerated and Inclusion Act or the Republic Act Number 10963 by making passive income taxes and financial intermediary taxes simpler, fairer, and more efficient. As it is today, the taxation on financial sectors may be described to have a complicated tax structure, susceptible to arbitrage, and an even playing field inequitable distribution of tax burden, uncompetitive tax system, high administrative and compliance costs, and not supportive of capital market development. It is said to be complicated as there are about eighty tax base and tax rate combinations applicable to financial income, financial intermediation services, and financial transactions. Tax on income also depends on many factors and conditions which are difficult to ascertain. Factors that affect the taxation of income include the type of product, type of lending, issuer, currency, maturity, taxpayer, residency, business status, and various special laws. This result in the variations in the tax base and tax rate even among comparable financial instruments and transactions. Under House Bill Number 8645, interests, dividends, and capital gains will be levied with a unified income tax rate of fifteen percent. Preneed pension and life insurance will be levied a uniform two percent. Various nuisance documentary stamp taxes will be removed. Resultantly, passive income rates will be reduced by half. Ultimately, the poor and the middle class will enjoy a net gain. Tax on savings will go down from twenty percent to fifteen percent, providing a tax saving of fifty pesos to one hundred thirteen pesos and fifty centavos for savings and investments ranging from thirty-five thousand pesos to one hundred thousand pesos. Meanwhile, the rich who invest in dividends will pay five percent more in taxes. However, the losses will only be minimal at less than two hundred pesos per fifty-five thousand pesos. Likewise, the variations in tax rates and unequal tax treatment of equivalent or comparable financial instruments give rise to arbitrage. Different tax treatment among sectors or between financial institutions and non-financial institutions offering the same service and/or products or between interests and dividends, open window for arbitrage and leveraging. These disparities in tax treatment distort investment decisions, considering that tax impositions overshadow all other considerations. Competitive advantage arises in favor of the financial sector favored by the lost tax treatment. This measure seeks to simplify such complicity and to provide neutrality in the tax treatment across financial institutions and financial instrument by reducing the number of rates of withholding taxes, removing the distinctions, special rates, and unnecessary exemptions. Moreover, the current tax system provides certain concessions or different tax treatments for certain transactions of some types of financial institutions or FIs compared to similar transactions of other FIs. For instance, there are exemptions allowed on long-term investments, bank deposits, individual trust funds, and investment management accounts in favor of resident individuals. Such exemptions do not cover long-term savings offered by other FIs such as life insurance, preneed pension plans, investment houses, among others. And at classification between different FIs, this is cost and equal treatment considering that some are subject to gross receipt tax or GRT, while some are subject to premium tax, while other are subject to value-added tax or VAT. For instance, banks, quasi-banks, and other FIs are subject to GRT, while life insurance companies are subject to premium tax, and lending investors, property insurers, preneed companies, health maintenance organizations or HMOs, and money remitters are subject to VAT. This is not to mention those investments in equity and some forms of long-term instruments are which subject to lower taxes. Hence, those who have more money to place in these kinds of investment tend to pay lower taxes compared to working-class individuals who are content with placing their funds in short-term investments or savings deposits with higher taxes. This measure intends to redesign the financial sector taxation into fairer and more efficient ways. With utmost optimism, this bill should improve equity among investors and savers, minimize arbitrage opportunity through a single rate of gross receipt tax on all insurance businesses, removal of distinction between lending and non-lending activities and term of maturity. In comparing our tax system on capital income with other ASEAN nations, the Philippine tax rates remain the highest in the region. This is the very reason why the Philippine capital market remains shallow and uncompetitive and continues to hold up behind ASEAN neighbors. Admittedly, our current tax system on financial sectors impose difficult and costly administrations, administration, and compliance. For instance, firms have to pay different taxes that are derived from the same tax base. There are also some taxes on financial transactions that hinder capital market development. Initial public offering or IPO tax, for instance, is essentially a tax on capital and does not take into consideration income generation. Such an imposition serves as a deterrent to public listing. This results in the Philippine Stock Exchange or PSE waddling behind other ASEAN countries in terms of market capitalization. Hence, this measure will promote capital market development and tax competitiveness within the context of financial globalization, increased capital mobility, and financial inclusion. It removes or minimizes barriers to capital market development like the IPO tax, which is found to be detrimental to capital market development. Further, the documentary stamp or DST of the financial sector has been rationalized to promote capital mobility. In order to have a competitive tax system, this bill adopted tax rates comparable to those of neighboring ASEAN nations and their best practices. With the introduced reform, the proposed rates would be at par with the rates imposed in the ASEAN to ensure competitiveness of the domestic capital market. The approval of this bill provides a window of opportunity to achieve the much-needed reform in the financial sector. The taxation of the financial system should indeed be viewed as a major component of these reforms and ingredient that could fuel and direct the movement of capital rightly to where they are most needed so that higher, sustainable, and more inclusive growth can be achieved. Financial sector taxation is indeed ripe for reform. We need to compete better in attracting capital and investment which is urgently needed to finance infrastructure, create more and better jobs, and boost the inclusive and sustainable growth of the economy. Thank you for your unwavering support on this important piece of legislation. Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker.
Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we suspend consideration of House Bill Number 8645.
Is there an objection? Hearing nan, motion is approved.
I move for suspension of session, Mr. Speaker.
Session suspended.
May we resume, Mr. Speaker?
Session resume.
Mr. Speaker, I move to elect the following Vice Chairman of the Oversight Committee. The following: Representatives Rodante Marcoleta, Victoria Isabel Noel, Cristina Rova Puno, Alexandria Gonzalez. I so move, Mr. Speaker.
Is there any objection? Hearing none. Motion is approved.
Mr. Speaker, for the majority, I move to elect the following members of the Oversight Committee: Representatives Michael Romero, Ron Salo, Bini Nola Ortega, Jo Gracias Victor Sabelliano, Rosana Vergara USA Enrique Garcia III, Marlene Alonte, Wilter Palma II, Marlene Premisas Agabas, Lawrence Fortun, Bernadette Herrera D., Lorita Robes, Johnny Pimentel, Oscar Garin Jr., Anne Hopper, Arthur DePenser Jr., Roelio Espina. I so move, Mr. Speaker.
Is there any objection? Hearing none. Motion is approved.
Mr. Speaker, I move to recognize the minority leader.
Minority Leader, Honorable Suarez is recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, for the minority, I move to elect the following members of the Oversight Committee: Congresswoman Juliet Marie Ferrer, Congressman Peter John Calderon, and Congressman Strike Ribilia. I so move, Mr. Speaker.
Is there any objection? Hearing none. Motion is approved.
Mr. Speaker, I move to elect the Honorable Horace Salon of Agri Partilis as Deputy Minority Leader. I so move, Mr. Speaker.
Is there any objection? Hearing none. Motion is approved. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, last Thursday, the Armed Forces of the Philippines Legislative Stakeholders Engagement, the Honorable Anthony Bravo, the Honorable Delosso Montalla and former Secretary General Pareja were not able to receive their certificates and marksmanship badge due to unforeseen events. In order to allow the representative of the AFP to present such certificate and badge to our colleagues, we are constrained to move for suspension of proceedings to give way to this awarding. I so move, Mr. Speaker.
Is there any objection? Hearing none. Motion is approved.
In the presentation of this award, Mr. Speaker, allow me to read the citation. Headquarters Training and Doctrine Command, Philippine Army Camp O'Donnell Kapastarla. General Orders Number 601 and 602, dated 22 November 2018, Pursuant to Paragraph G1 Appendix G28-1 Annex, Armed Forces of the Philippines Regulation G131-054, General Headquarters Armed Forces of the Philippines, dated 26 June 2014, as revised. The award of Marksmanship Badge Expert is hereby awarded to Lieutenant Colonel Anthony M. Bravo. Likewise, under the same citation just read, the award is likewise given to former Secretary General Attorney Caesar S. Pareja by command of Major General DeMesse.
Congratulations. Session resume.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we resume consideration of Resolution of Both Houses Number 15 contained in Committee Report Number 923. And for this, please direct our Secretary General to read the title of the resolution.
Is there any objection? Hearing none. Motion is approved. The Secretary General is directed to read the title of the resolution.
Resolution of Both Houses 15, Resolution of Both Houses Proposing the Revision of the 1987 Constitution of the Republic of the Philippines.
Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, the parliamentary status is that we are in the period of sponsorship and debate. I move that we recognize the Honorable Wilter Palma to sponsor the measure.
Honorable Palma is recognized to sponsor the resolution.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Mr. Speaker, first to interpolate today, interpolate today is the lady from the 3rd District of Nueva Ecija. I move that we recognize the Honorable Rosana Vergara.
Honorable Vergara is recognized to interpolate.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker, for this opportunity to be here as we discuss the revision of the Philippine Constitution as embodied in Resolution of Both Houses Number 15. I believe it is our solemn duty under the Constitution to fully participate in these deliberations as the revisions of this fundamental law of our land will affect all Filipinos. I fully support Resolution Number 15. Honorable Veloso said last week, when he introduced this joint resolution, that one of the objectives of Resolution Number 15 is to spur regional economic development in those regions in our country left behind. He specifically mentioned Region 8, or to decentralize Imperial Manila, a phrase I so often heard growing up. I am hopeful that the country's development, especially in the regions that are lagging, will be addressed by the change from a unitary form of government to a federal one. With this in mind, I would like to ask the honorable sponsor about some provisions, be enlightened as to the reason they were placed or amended, and explain why I think they should be removed, deleted, or strengthened. Is that allowed? I ask permission, Honorable Speaker, to begin. Thank you.
Please proceed.
In Article 2 of the proposed federal constitution, the proponents added the clause "shall be governed by benevolent neutrality" to the present Article 2, Section 16, which currently states "the separation of church and state shall be inviolable." I know that the addition constitutionalizes a standard used by the Supreme Court in the 2003 case of Estrada versus Escritor. I support Congressman Tinho's observation that the current insertion of the phrase "relations between them shall be governed by benevolent neutrality" in Article 2, Section 16 should be removed and retain the current line as is. Separation of church and state shall be inviolable. Since this article in the Constitution speaks of general principles, I think that we should just leave the current section in the Constitution as it is and let the task of developing constitutional tests or standards to the Supreme Court, which has the duty to interpret our Constitution in the context of the changing circumstances and facets of our national life. I fear that constitutionalizing the standard of benevolent neutrality would unnecessarily make the Constitution inflexible, even during those times that require a reexamination of our laws. May we ask the Honorable Palma if he is amenable to this recommendation?
Mr. Speaker, since we are in the period of interpretation, our stand is, kung ano po 'yung nakasulat po natin dito, is 'yung po 'yung pinagdenipensahan namin at 'yung po 'yung paniniwala nating ng representanteng ito. Sabagat po ay, ito po ay dumaan po sa maraming komite at marami pong, it underwent a lot of consultation. And my personal view is that I believe on the provision of the benevolent neutrality. However, that being said, I would like to encourage the Honorable Vergara that in due time, she may also introduce some amendments, whether it would be to amend the provision itself or to delete the provision on the proper time. With that, siguro dadaan naman po sa, dadaan naman po sa diskusyon po 'yan, at siguro po sa tamang panahon, magkakaroon po tayo ng diskusyon kung amendahan po ba natin ang provision na 'yan o hindi, tatanggalin ba natin o hindi. So, siguro po sa tamang panahon, pag-uusapan po natin 'yan during the period of amendments po. That being said also, let me also stress that the provision of the benevolent neutrality was actually introduced by the Constitutional Commission and was recommended by the Commission that was created by the President of the Philippines, Rodrigo Rawa Duterte.
So, Honorable sponsor, you cannot really, since they were the ones that inserted it, you're in no position to explain why they did?
No, ma'am. As of now, I cannot definitely say that I am in favor of your recommendation or not, but let me stress again that this is the recommendation of the Constitutional Commission. And my personal, my personal view is that I believe in the theory of the benevolent neutrality. So, like I said, this representation is willing to listen in due time when the period of amendment is already open, then we will hear your concerns and we'll be happy to deliberate on that during the period of amendments.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. The next, Mr. Speaker, is the proposed constitutional, also amends Article 3, Section 1 of the current Constitution by adding this provision as the first line. As Congressman Tinho also mentioned, "the natural right to protect oneself shall always be respected by the state." A reading of the line tells us that it speaks of the right to self-defense. I echo Congressman Tinho's questions last Wednesday with respect to the necessity and danger of constitutionalizing the right to self-defense. In the first place, the right to self-defense as a natural right is debatable. It transports us back to the time when society was still ruled by the passions of men and not by law. But even conceding the status of that right, there is no necessity to make it a constitutional and primordial right, as Congressman Tinho said in Article 3, considering that such right is already granted under our statutes and is well embedded in our criminal laws. In the revised Penal Code, Article 11 protects the person who exercises self-defense from any criminal liability. So, I guess my question is similar. It's, why is that now the very first line of our Bill of Rights?
Mr. Speaker, the first line of Section 1, the natural right to protect oneself, this provision was inserted also as a recommendation by the Constitutional Commission. And like I previously mentioned, Mr. Speaker, the, siguro ang chronology po dito hindi naman po ibig sabihin na since nauna siya, ay siya na ang nagiging pinakamataas po na rights of a person. So, like I said po, in the previous, last week, I mentioned na pwede naman po nating pagbaliktarin ang mga provision na ito, 'tong mga sentences na in Section 1. But the rationale for the natural right, the provision of the natural right is that the right of the people to use reasonable force or defensive force for the purpose of defending one's own life should be given priority. Pero hindi naman po sinasabing siya ang pinakamataas. Ang sinasabi lang po natin ay natural right po natin ito na sapagkat buhay na po natin ang pinag-uusapan. Hindi po ibig sabihin na kesyo nandito siya sa Constitution ay we already have the absolute power to defend ourselves. Meron siyang kriteriya po na sinusunod at 'yun po ang nakalaan sa ating revised Penal Code, even the rules of court. Nakalaan po ang mga procedure na ito. Meron pang mga principles in the criminal law wherein it says na, even if the right exercised by the person is not of self-defense, if it does not fall within the criteria mentioned in the revised Penal Code, eh mananagot po siya sa ating hukuman. So, ang sinasabi lang po namin dito, Mr. Speaker, is that kailangan lang po namin i-institutionalize ang natural right natin and to be recognized that protection of oneself is a natural right of every person. Hindi po sinasabi ng Constitution or the proposed Constitution nito na ito po ay pinakamataas na po na right ng ating, ng pansariling right natin. So, 'yun lang po, Mr. Speaker. Gusto lang namin i-institutionalize o kinikilala lang po natin ang ating mga karapatan pang taon sa ating sariling karapatan po.
I concur, pero siguro nababahala lang ako dahil siya ngayon ang pinaka-unang linya sa Bill of Rights and kahit tayo, di ba pag tumatakbo o sa partilis po lang nag-aagawan sino ang letter A?
Naintindihan ko po.
And, you know, it seems to reinforce the idea that self-defense is the most important and it worries me that it might weaken the rule of law. So, and like you mentioned, honorable author, that it's already in the revised Penal Code. So, nagtataka lang ako, bakit natin na naman pinapasok dito? It seems misplaced. But I understand your explanation. Maybe I'd be more comfortable if I didn't see it as the first line under the Bill of Rights. The second one, ah, the third one, honorable speakers, regarding the Bill of Duties. I was listening last week when Honorable Veloso was explaining and I think the spirit behind putting the Bill of Duties is similar to what JFK said, "ask not what your country can do for you, but what you can do for your country." And however, I'm just thinking that, doesn't this sort of demand certain duties as stated here and that if you don't perform them, then you have no right to the Bill of Rights that is enshrined in this Constitution? Like, how do we define participate meaningfully under Section 4? Says citizens shall participate actively in public and civic affairs, contribute to good government. contribute to good government, good governance. Who and how do we define participate actively? For instance, kunwari, merong alay lakad na sponsored ng gobyerno, tapos hindi ka sumama. Is that a violation of your duty? Not to activate, not to participate actively by opting not to join, let's say, these kinds of activities that are sponsored by the government?
Mr. Speaker, hindi po natin, ah, hindi po ganyan ang konsepto ng Bill of Duties. Papaliwanag ko lang po, ang Bill of Duties po kasi ay dinagdag po dito sa proposed Constitution, the federal, proposed Federal Constitution. Kasi po, ang Bill of Rights natin under the 1987 Constitution or Article 3, these are the limitations imposed by the Constitution against the state. In other words po, pinipigilan po ng Article 3 ang estado na gumawa na karasan against sa atin po na mga mamamayan, even including those that are not citizens of the Philippines who are present here in the country. Now, ang Bill of Duties po kasi, ang, parang ito po ang hinihingi ng gobyerno, nakapalit lang po, na, kumbaga, rerespetuhin lang po natin na meron tayong mga obligasyon sa ating mga, ah, sa ating gobyerno. Not necessary naman po na ito po ay, kagaya po ng inyong example, magiging violation kaagad. Ah, magiging violation lang po 'yan kung may corresponding penalty. Pero sa nakikita po natin dito sa ating Article 4, wala namang corresponding penalty po ito. Ang sinasabi lang ng Constitution natin ay, meron lang, 'yung proposed Constitution, ay meron lang tayong corresponding na duty na dapat nating ibigay din sa ating estado.
So, Honorable Author, pag hindi po natin nagawa 'yung mga nakasaad dito sa Bill of Duty, ano po ang kahinat na nung hindi sumunod dun sa duty na 'yun?
Madam, ah, Mr. Speaker, as of now, if you look at the Article 4 of the proposed Constitution, wala pong penalty na nakalagay po. In fact, the Constitution, the 1987 Constitution, does not provide for any penalty. There should be corresponding laws perhaps in the future. Perhaps a, a law which mandates, perhaps anything at all na, kunwari, 'yung sinabi mo, regarding 'yung alay lakad, na meron multa, 'yun siguro ang magkakaroon tayo ng, siguro do'n tayo magkakaroon ng another diskusyon. But in this proposed sections of the Article 4 of the proposed, ah, Constitution, Federal Constitution, wala pong, ahm, wala pong sinasabi dito na pag ito po'y hindi natin sinunod, ay meron tayong kaupulan na parusa na matatanggap. Hindi po ganun ang operation ng Constitution. Ang Constitution po ay nagsasabi lang, o the proposed Constitution, obey the laws, pay taxes. Wala pong sinasabi kung alin ditong laws or alin ditong taxes ang ating, ahm... For example, obey the laws, which laws would that be? Wala namang pong binabanggit dito. It presupposes that this includes all present laws and future na gagawin pang batas.
I agree because like, some of it is redundant, like Section 1, it shall be the duty of every citizen to be loyal to the Republic of the Philippines, honor the Philippine flag. We already have RA 8491, which is the code of the national flag.
Tama po.
Then defend the state. I mean, most of this are already embodied in Republic Acts. So, ano lang, ano po 'yung spirit behind creating this Bill of Duties? Hindi po ito quit pro quo. Hindi po ito na, oh sige, may Bill of Rights ka, pero para makuha mo 'yung rights na 'yun, kailangan susunod ka naman sa Bill of Duties na nakasaad dito.
Hindi naman po, hindi naman po ganun, Mr. Speaker. The reason behind, the rationale behind the inclusion of the Bill of Duties is to institutionalize lang po. Tama po 'yung sinasabi ni Honorable Vergara na meron na po tayong mga batas. In fact, the 1987 Constitution, makikita natin na 'yung ibang aspeto nitong Bill of Duties ay nandun sa 1987 Constitution. Like for example, be loyal to the Republic of the Philippines, eh talagang requirement po 'yan sa atin ng mga citizen of the Philippines. Even, even those who are not citizens of the Philippines should obey the law. So talagang enshrine po 'yan. Kaya lang, ahm, napagkasunuan po ng Constitutional Commission na i-institutionalize po natin 'yung Bill of Duties. And, ah, parang mailagay lang po siya at ma-institutionalize siya na hindi na natin kailangan gumawa pa po ng mga other laws, the Republic Acts, o executive orders para sundin po natin ang mga duties na ito. General, general ang nakalagay dito, general po ang provision. Ang sinasabi lang po, i-institutionalize natin, kung meron mang batas later on na, ah, gagawin ng Kongreso, ay dapat po ating sundin.
If I may just manifest, sir, the danger I see of constitutionalizing this duty is that the government is now given a basis to penalize in the future their non-performance even when there is no clear and measurable standard in, for instance, determining participation in civil affairs or contribution of good governance. Our focus should be to better the lives of our countrymen and not to unduly burden them with duties that they already know are correlative to their rights as citizens. So, that's just my concern. Um, I'm just, if it's there as it is, fine, but if as we move forward and, you know, we have other amendments and all of a sudden this duty will now carry with it certain penalties that are not in the Republic Acts, because it's in our Constitution, then that's when it becomes worrisome for me. If I may go to the next point?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Speaker, the two-party system. I support in theory the proposal to institute a two-party system so that there are more remedies to exact accountability in the participation of politicians in our national life. This means that we can finally put a stop to, to, or at least address the phenomenon of political butterflies who switch parties for convenience and without regard to issues or principles. A two-party system will allow our people to hold a party accountable during elections as they will have an option to choose one or the other party or vote a party out when the party in power is failing in its governance and policies. I'm curious however, as to the vision of the proponents on how the two-party system might work in our country. And I'm a little worried because, um, I was asking around and they said that the two-party system will evolve depending on which two parties in the elections proposed in 2022 wins the most seats. What happens if that party is the Communist Party? Ah, they're funded by international groups. What, how do we prevent that? How do we maintain the democracy, which is a form of government that we have? In our desire to have a two-party system and we say that the elections will determine which are the most dominant parties, heaven forbid, the next dominant party is the Communist Party. What are the safeguards there?
Thank you very much for the question, Your Honor. Mr. Speaker, ang two-party system po na pinopropose po natin dito sa Federal Constitution, eh, ito po 'yung, parang sa United States of America. They have the Republican and they have a Democrat. So, nagkakaroon, ang, ang binobotohan po ng mga Americans is not the person, but rather the party. Because each party has its own, ahm, ideology, perhaps eh, meron silang sariling pananaw on how to improve the country. Ito po ang ninanais lang po natin nagyayain. Kasi sa pagka, sa, sa ngayon po, makikita natin na since we have a multi-party system, magkakanya-kanya lang po tayo. Itong partido neto, iba ang pananaw. Itong partido neto, iba rin ang pananaw. There is no continuity of the program of the government. Kung napapansin po ninyo, pagkatapos ng isang presidente, ang pumalit, iba na ang agenda. Pagkatapos ng president, ng presidente na 'yan, ang pumalit, iba na naman ang agenda. And there are, there are programs of the government and there are, ahm, issues of the society that, which needs to be addressed beyond the six-year term limit of a president. So ang nakikitang ano po, solution dito ay gumawa ng dalawang partido. Itong isang partido, ito 'yung kanyang pananaw, ito 'yung ilalahad niya ng mga programa. The other party is the same. They will, ah, lay down their programs and plans for the future of this republic. Pagkatapos po, tayo mga politician, nasa sa atin po 'yun. Kung alin po ang, aling pananaw po ang nasa, ah, that we believe in or that we want to be, ahm, recognized with. So kumbaga, ang punto lang po talaga dito is continuity of all the programs of the government, na huwag 'yung pabago-bago. Tapos, nagiging isang problema po natin, 'yung multi-party kasi, dapat, ahm, dyan dito lang po, ang present situation natin, may presidente tayo. Pero ang mga nasababa, legislative, even the executive, magkaibang partido. Eh, since hindi namin katunggali ang presidente, o oppose kami dyan. So ganun po ang status natin ngayon. Although hindi ko naman sinasabi na absolute na, ng mga op, with due respect to the, our colleagues here who are in the opposition, hindi ko naman sinasabi na ganun, pero it happens. Now, ang, ang, ang nagiging problema is sa multi-party, nagkokombine tayo ng mga kanyang-kanyang mga ideas. And yet, we cannot come up with a long-term plan for the government because may sarili nga tayong mga agenda at may sarili tayong mga priorities. With the two-system party, we are hoping that this will be addressed.
So, Honorable Author, would you be, um, privy to what the framers of this two-party system, how, what, what do they see here in the Philippines? Pro-China versus the pro-US? Um, most of the time when we campaign, we hear our leaders saying the same thing. We're for the poor, we're going to uplift your lives. So, um, I'm just asking you, in your opinion, how do you see these two parties emerging? What do you think, will it, in the US, the Republicans are the capitalists and the Democrats are like for the working man, the labor unions. In the UK, you have the liberals and you have the conservatives. So here, this two-party system for our country, what do you think the framers have in mind? Um, what would be the defining line for one to be able to distinguish from the other? Do you have any idea?
Mr. Speaker, I am not privy to as to how the members of the Constitutional Commission deliberated on this matter and come up with an idea of setting up a two-party system. I'm not privy to the discussion. However, as regards to your second question on how I envision a two-party system here in the Philippines, um, 'yun po ang kagandahan po dito, ma'am, Your Honor. Because the two-party system will eventually evolve. So, as of now, what we see is the, the present multi-party. That this party has its own stand, this party has its own stand, another party has its own stand. But when we shift into a two-party system, the, the framers perhaps envision that it will, um, mature, it will develop, it will, ah... Siguro, kasi merong siyang ano pa eh, the, the change of the system will not happen in a flick of a finger. That I can, I can say that, that is my opinion. Ang paniniwala ko po, hindi po basa-basang pag sabing after the election, 'yun, two-party system, 'yun na 'yun kaagad. Mag-i-evolve po ang ating party system. Mag-i-evolve po ang dalawang partido. So just like in the US, just like in the UK, 'yung mga Democrats and Republicans, the conservatives and the liberals, as they go along, nag-i-evolve po sila. In fact, the programs that they have, nag-i-evolve. So, siguro 'yun po ang essence ng, ah, or perhaps the, the vision of the framers of the, or the Constitutional Commission na to allow the party system later on to evolve without, without any interference from the, from the government or any person, let the flow of time, allow the, the flow, ah, for the party to evolve.
But Honorable Author, it, that is exactly what worries me when you say it will evolve. Um, what happens if the loudest voice and the most, the one that sends the message that touches the most of our poor brothers and sisters is the cry of the Communist Party of the Philippines? Are we going to allow them to be the second party? That, that, and that's why I ask.
Yeah.
Who will determine what these two parties will be? Will it be something that, ah, who garners the most votes? Will there be guidelines? Ah, because to allow it to evolve, I think is very dangerous.
Yes, um, Mr. Speaker, in the onset, let me be clear that only registered parties are allowed under the proposed, ah, Federal Constitution. Only registered parties are allowed to participate in the election. Parties which are per se illegal or not allowed by state should not, or are not allowed to participate in the, um, in the election. Okay? So, only registered po. Eh, and on the hypothetical, ah, again, let me stress out that this is just my opinion, on the hy, on the hypothesis na merong isang grupo na nakapasok dito sa isang partido at 'yun po ang naging dominante, ah, Mr. Speaker, Your Honor, ito pong essence ng demokrasya, to allow the people to say what they want. Because we in the government, we as elected officials, should only voice out the voices of the people. Kung sila ang mananalo dyan, because 'yun po ang tawag ng karamihan at 'yun po ang tawag ng mga, ah, taon bayan, ay wala po tayong, hindi ko po masasabing wala po tayong magagawa, pero 'yun po talaga ang essence ng demokrasya, to listen and to allow the people to say what they want through the election.
But will you assure me that, ah, that those parties that are running on a platform contrary to what the Republic of the Philippines stands for will not be allowed to be a dominant party in this two-party system that this Constitution proposes? Or you're still of the mind that this is a democracy and if that's what the people want, then so be it?
Mr. Speaker, let me, ah, make it clear that, um, again, only registered parties can participate in the election. Illegal parties or parties that uphold to, or that believes in illegal activities are not allowed to enter into the, ah, election arena. In other words, Mr. Speaker, on the onset pa lang po, pag-file pa lang po ng kandidatura ng ating mga, ah, ng mga nagnanais na gustong mahalal, ay tinitingnan po 'yung partido. May komelek po tayo, may guidelines po 'yung mga komelek. If they violate the rules and regulations and the, the laws, then it will not be given the permission to enter as a party in the election.
Honorable Author, you said that one of the reasons we thought the framers propose this two-party system is for continuity and to prevent political switching, right?
Yes, ma'am.
Wouldn't it, rather than go from a multi-party to a strict two-party system, might it not be better to maintain the multi-party system and just amend our laws to make switching, ah, to make switching illegal?
Actually, Your Honor, ah, with, with the, the term "switching", meaning the transfer of one, one elected official or one person, one candidate to another party, it's actually allowed in the proposed, ah, Federal Constitution. Only that there is a time period wherein a person cannot transfer from one party to the next, to the other party in a matter, in period of six months after the election. So, 'yung switching po, na quote-unquote "switching" po, actually the, the federal, the proposed Federal Constitution allows it. So, ang, ang sinasabi lang po kasi dito is to establish a two-party system that upholds two different, perhaps two different ideas, two different programs that gives us, um, a continuing, at least an outlook of a continuing program of the government. So hindi po ito ibig sabihin na, ah, just for, just for an example, myself, kung lilipat ako sa isang partido, hindi po ibig sabihin na pinagbabawalan po ako because this is my right if I want to join the, ah, the other party. So, ang ibig lang sabihin nito is na-institutionalize po natin ang dalawang partido wherein makikita natin dito ang ating mga programa. At tulad ng sinabi ko kanina, pagdating sa Amerika, the American voters do not vote for the person. They are actually voting for the, the, the principles or the, ah, the programs of that party. So basically, kaya magugulat na lang tayo sa governor ng, ng isang lugar, hindi siya kilala pero nanalo. Eh, wala namang siyang platapormang sinasabi. Ang sinasabi lang niya, I am for the Democrats, I am in the Republican, kasi naka-institutionalize po 'yung mga programs nila. You can see it from the each state na nakalagay, ah, ito 'yung programa ng Democrats, ito 'yung programa ng Republicans. Ito lang po ang ninanais ng proposed Federal Constitution natin, not, not to prevent any one of us from switching, ah, parties.
Okay, then I stand corrected because I thought the, the, the reason for the two-party system was to, um, to minimize the, you know, polit, switching from one party to another. So, in short, the two-party system is just to really create two parties with differing principles so that, um, ah, the voters can identify who they support and it's not, no longer an issue of personalities but party, party, ah...
Representation.
Representation.
Yes, Your Honor.
Is that right?
Yes, Your Honor.
But still, ah, I just want to... But still, I just want to say again, the evolving that really worries me. And I just hope that once the constitution is approved, the, this will have IRR? Or no, the constitution doesn't require, it is what it is on paper.
Yes.
Subject to interpretation, if there's confusion, then it goes to the Supreme Court to determine how to interpret it.
Yes, your honor.
I move on to the next issue, the ticket vote of president and vice president, which is what they have in the United States where, since it's a two-party system, you vote, a vote for the president is a vote for the vice president. And yet, historically, here in our country, we always see that, most often than not, the president and the vice president come from two differing parties.
That's correct.
And it's almost like our electorates like that check and balance. They don't want to give the entire executive branch, at least a president and vice president, to one, to two individuals who are of the same party. Aren't we, based on historical data, with the exception, I believe, of in 2004, that was the only time we had the president-elect GMA and vice president, Noddy Castro. All other elections, it was always a different president and vice president. By putting this in our constitution, aren't we, aren't we going against what our people believe in or how they like to vote? Isn't, aren't we forcing it upon them now? Okay, now we've changed our constitution, so it's take one by two. No more, you know, you might like that vice president, but he's not with the president you like, so you have to, I mean, this is mandated, doesn't, isn't that sort of forcing them into a box?
Mr. Speaker, I don't believe that this is a violation of the right of the people to choose because this goes in hand also with the two-party system. So, ang point lang po dito is, since we have a two-party system, the vision here is to have a two-party system, it is necessary therefore that the president and the vice president should belong to the same party. So, a vote of one should also be the vote of the other. Kasi nga po, nandun 'yung dalawang partido lang na nakikita natin. Can you imagine a system wherein a two-party system and yet nagkaroon ng problema because the president and the vice president does not belong to the same party? So, the whole point of having it, 'yung votes for a president is also the equal votes of the vice president, is hinge on the idea that we have a two-party system.
So, if for any reason, we amend this and it becomes a multi-party system with amendments, then this vote for president and vice president will also be removed? It only follows that, if this constitution is approved as a two-party system, then this follows?
Yes, that is the vision here, your honor.
So, if in the period of amendments, we amend it and say, okay, we'll have a transition phase, it won't be a two-party system immediately, it will be, it will take a while before we get there, then this one vice, one vote for the president and vice president will automatically be deferred also? Is that correct?
Let me, for a point of clarification lang, your honor. Are we saying that we amend, in the event that we amend the two-party system and allow the multi-party system? Pag hindi po naamendahan po ito, itong provision na'to, it necessary follows that if the proposed federal constitution is ratified by the people, then necessary, nandun pa rin po 'yung vote na president is also the vote of the vice president. So, if our colleagues would like to introduce an amendment, maybe we should look into that also. Kasi hindi po, hindi po natin sinasabi na amending one provision necessarily amends the other, hindi po. Kung meron tayong nakikitang kailangan i-amend dito sa isang provision na'to at nakaruntong equally related to the next provision, I suggest that we look also into that provision because one amendment will not necessarily amend the other provision.
Thank you. The last one that I'd like, I mean, the second to the last, which is most troublesome for me, is the requirement of a college degree to run for a national position. At first glance, this qualification seems justifiable. We look for college degree holders for top positions in the private sector, their civil service eligibility for important government positions. So, why not for the most important elected positions in government, especially those national in scope? It's a perfectly logical premise and makes perfect sense. However, honorable author, here are the facts. In 2010, only 10% of Filipinos had college degrees. As of 2018, the 10% is now 36% or an increase of 3.25% per year. And free college education in public state universities has only been around for less than a year. Thus, requiring college degrees would disenfranchise almost 64% of our voters, narrow the pool of qualified people simply because they don't have a college degree. And there is no scientific evidence that a college graduate would perform better as a leader than one who isn't. In my own personal experience as a neophyte congressman, none of the classes I took in college are relevant in my job as a representative. The traits that helped me serve my constituents have nothing to do with my educational attainment. Rather, perseverance, the recognition of my own strengths and weaknesses, knowledge about the needs of my constituents, and making informed and sound choices when voting and making bills, these are the traits that I rely on most, none of which I learned in college. In Feb. 2018, the Harvard Business Review published an article of successful CEOs without college degrees. And they cited three attributes. The first, familiarity with the issues of the business, or in our case, it should be a prospective leader's familiarity with the needs and problems of his district or his country. The second trait was sincerity and reliability, doing what you say and delivering results. And the third was humility, recognizing what you don't know and bringing in people who are experts and work with them as a team. None of this are gained by having a college degree. We can add to that list, character, integrity, and sound judgment. To require a college degree would narrow the pool of qualified applicants and would be unjust and contradicts Section 25 of Article 1 in this proposed constitution, which says, "Equal access to serve in public office." Thus, I hope that during the period of amendments, we will consider to remove this qualification so as not to dash the hopes of our fellow Filipinos who have not had the opportunity that most of us have. Sabi nga ng asao ko, masarap mangarap dahil ang pangarap ay libre. Huwag naman sana natin ipagkait ang mangarap sa ating mga kababayan na hindi pinalad makapag-aral dahil sa kahirapan. Sana sila din ay maaring mangarap na makapaglingkod bilang representante, senador, vice presidente o presidente dahil ang hinahanap natin sa ating liderato higit sa katelinyuhan ay katapatan, mapagkumbaba, pagmamahal sa bayan, at kagustuhan magsibihin na walang hinihintay na kapalit. I know that the next section of that says that Congress will exempt those who have been elected prior to the approval of this constitution. But even that, I think, is unfair because it says, "If you're able to get elected before we apply this, then even if you have no college degree, then you're okay. But if you unfortunately lost in these previous elections and now you win, but you have no college degree, sorry, you're not allowed to sit." So, I hope you will take this explanation and really look into why we all of a sudden included a college degree for congressmen, senators, the president, and the vice president.
Mr. Speaker, just to, a quick response to the honorable Vergara's concerns and observations, it is true that, and by the way, let me stress that I fully agree on the honorable Vergara's statement that college or educational attainment does not make you, or does not define you as a good leader. That is true, I agree. However, in this proposed constitution, federal constitution, the reason why it was included, the requirement of, the requirement of a college education is placed is because we want to elevate and we want to... Kumbaga gusto lang natin na pagandahin pa ang ating pagsiseryo. Now, I may be, baka mamiskonstruonin niyo ako, pero ang sinasabi ko lang po is the quality of product that we give out. Kumbaga, can you imagine pagdating sa mga aplikante na mga ordinaryong mamamayan, eh, janitorial palang eh, nakalagay na as one of the requirement, ay must be college level. Pero pagdating po sa ating mga, with all due respect, sa pinakamataas ni, na kamay ni ng gobyerno, ang presidente natin, eh, nakalagay na na qualification, must be able to read and write. Now, hindi ko naman sa binamaliit 'yun, ang sa akin lang po, gusto lang po natin na iangat ang ating quality of service. It may not, and I fully agree with your statement, I will go, your honor, it may not define you as a good leader or not. What is important is that you render your service. However, there are sectors in the government, such as ourselves in the Congress, that kind of, parang, ang academic standards po eh, medyo kailangan. Lalo't lalo na po ay batas po ang ating mga ginagawa dito. So, in order for us to have a better grasp, a better understanding, that is why it was agreed to put in a, one of the requirements, an education, college education. So, if I'm, if I remember it, no, hindi lang ako sure kung tama ang memory ko, pero dati pa nga may nakalagay na "or it's equivalent". Kaya lang, ang problema, "or it's equivalent", ano naman 'yung equivalent na 'yun? So, that's why it was removed and instead, it was, nilagay na lang po na college education, na college degree.
Honorable, I mean, I'm sorry, what was it before?
Dati, meron pong ano, your honor, college degree or it's equivalent. May nakalagay pong ganyan during the deliberations. And then, a lot of questions were raised because what is considered as equivalent to, it's equivalent. So, kaya napagkasunduan na tanggalin na lang 'yun dahil parang mas lalong gumulo. So, what came out as a result of all the deliberation is ito pong college degree.
I, I kind of disagree that you say, but you're saying that having a college degree will elevate or improve the quality of our governance. Maybe if we look at all those found guilty by the Sandigan, how many kaya have no college degree? And I'm sure all of them have college degrees. So, in fairness to the 64% of Filipinos who have yet to attain a college degree, maybe it would be fair to put this 10 or 15 years from now when the free education that was just signed by the president into law last year has been around for a longer time? Because you have Bill Gates, you have Steven Jobs, you have Mark Zuckerberg. These are all billionaires, I mean, they're, they've changed, you know, the way we communicate. These are college dropouts. And are you telling me they're not qualified to be president because they don't have that degree? We look to America, you have Abraham Lincoln, George Washington, Harry S. Truman. They're the pillars of American democracy. They were self-schooled, they don't have college degrees. I just don't want people to think that we're creating a constitution that will only, it's very elitist. I mean, usually, those who can afford college are from the A, B, C class. So, let it not be said that this Congress passed a constitution that disenfranchised the people from the lower classes who don't have access. Like I said, let's give them hope, let's not dash that hope. In 10, 15 years, this free college education will have more or less, maybe increase the 36% to 85%. I think that would be acceptable. The last, honorable author, is about the composition of the electoral tribunal. Currently, the House of Representatives Electoral Tribunal is composed of five representatives and three justices from the Supreme Court. Now, this proposal amends that and says that they want two from the House of Representatives, two from the Senate, and five justices from the Supreme Court. Aren't the compositions of the present electoral tribunal more appropriate? As such, have the proper check and balance mechanisms in that co-decision-making of the justices who are tempered by the competence of legislators who were the ones who ran for office and are more familiar with the realities of elections and compliance with the requirements of the elections, returns, and qualifications of the members and vice versa? May the honorable sponsor enlighten yours truly on the reason why this amendment was introduced to stack the electoral tribunal in favor of the Supreme Court justices than the, than representatives elected by the people?
Mr. Speaker, the, the whole idea of an electoral tribunal, ang electoral tribunal po ay, para pong husgado po ito eh. This is the sole body that will determine whether a certain candidate or a certain elected official is indeed qualified, possesses all the qualifications and none of the disqualifications. This is judicial in nature. Now, in the present constitution, meron po tayong tinatawag na House of Representatives Electoral Tribunal. And as a counterpart, in the Senate, we have a Senate Electoral Tribunal. The proposed federal constitution, however, tinanggal po natin ang HRET at SET. Ginawa po natin Congress Congressional Electoral Tribunal. So, if there is a question as to the qualification of a senator, this particular case will be brought into the Congressional Electoral Tribunal. In the same way that if there is a, there's a question of eligibility of a member of the House, dito rin po natin dadalhin 'yan. Kaya po nagkaroon ng equal number ang ating Senate and the House of Representatives. Now, as to the question as to why mas marami ang justices na involve or the members of the judiciary are involved, like I said, the function of an electoral tribunal is that of a judicial in nature. Ang function po ng isang mambabatas po, ay inscribe po sa isang legislative function. So, parang nagkaroon po tayo ng isang, nagkaroon lang po tayo ng isang delineation lang na parang hindi po maubos ang oras ng isang mambabatas na instead of attending to his constituents and attending to his function as a legislative, member of the legislative body of the, of the branch of the government, eh, napupunta na lang po 'yung oras at panahon niya sa pag-iintindin ng isang kaso ng kanyang kasamahan sa kongreso. Na-uubos ang kanyang oras dahil lamang po sa isang disqualification case filed against a certain individual. So, nawawala po 'yung, 'yung function niya. Kaya tinanggal natin, or hindi naman natin tinanggal, but rather, binawasan natin ang members of the House and members of the Senate na members of the Congressional Electoral Tribunal at dinamihan natin ang mga justices, the members of the judiciary.
So, honorable author, the spirit behind cutting back the number of representatives is because of time. You want, we want our representatives engaging more in creating bills.
Your, our functions, yes, your honor.
And that's, that is the reason.
That's just one of the reasons, your honor.
Okay, thank you very much, honorable author, honorable speaker. That ends, I hope that my speaking here does not prevent me from rising up again for the amendment.
I thank you, your honor.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
May we know, Mr. Speaker, is the pleasure of the gentleman?
Mr. Speaker, as we are tackling a very important legislature and we have no quorum, I move that we adjourn.
Mr. Speaker, may I move for a suspension before we proceed to the motion?
Session resumed. Mr. Speaker, I withdraw my motion.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we take up additional reference of business and we request the Secretary General to read the titles of the committee reports for the referral to the appropriate committees.
Is there any objection? Hearing none. The Secretary General is directed to read the title of the bill and journal. The Secretary General is directed to read the title of the bill and, uh, journal.
Additional reference of business committee reports, report number 952 by the Committee on Justice and the Committee on Appropriations on House Bill Number 8646.
Report number 953 by the Committee on Revision of Laws on House Bill Number 8648.
The Committee on Rules.
Report number 954 by the Committee on Transportation on House Bill Number 8649.
The Committee on Rules. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we designate the following members to the Bi-Cameral Conference Committee.
Uh, parliamentary inquiry. Um, should we, uh, suspend first the consideration of, uh, the previous bills?
We already did, uh, Mr. Speaker.
Are you satisfied with the, uh...
Yes, Mr. Speaker.
Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we designate the following members to the Bi-Cameral Conference Committee on the disagreeing provisions of House Bill Number 8417 and Senate Bill Number 1439 on establishing the energy virtual one-stop shop. As follows, Representatives Lord Alan Bilasco, Carlos Roman Uibareta, Rodel Batucabe, Jose Enrique Garcia III, and Orestes Salon.
Is there any objection? Hearing none, hearing none, motion is approved.
Mr. Speaker, I move to adjourn until tomorrow, November 27, 3 o'clock in the afternoon.
Is there any objection? The session is adjourned until 3 o'clock tomorrow.